Good evening. Welcome to the Livonia Public Schools Board of Education Committee of the Whole Meeting of April 11th, 2016. If you do not have an agenda yet and you'd like one, there's a stack of agendas just outside the door. If you're watching from home and you'd like to follow along with an agenda, you can find one on our website, which is at www.livoniapublicschools.org. If you hover over the School Board tab, you can drop down to Agendas and follow along if you'd like. Tonight's meeting is a Committee of the Whole meeting, which is a non-voting meeting. What happens at tonight's meeting is generally a lot of discussion on a whole lot of items. However, there will not be any votes on these items. Anything that is ready for a vote after tonight's discussion will be voted upon at our next voting or general meeting, which I believe is next week on the 18th. So you can tune in at that time for votes. I find these meetings the most interesting, rather, and I thank you for attending or tuning in for these. You'll probably hear a lot of back-and-forth discussions, sometimes some requests to administration for more information. At times they'll be ready for a vote, and at times it'll be things that this board's going to consider for some further weeks before we take any action on them. But tonight, we do have a rather full agenda, so we'll go ahead and get started. The first item on our agenda this evening is Audience Communications. Audience Communications is a time that the Board sets a time to listen to concerns or questions from the public. We do ask that you honor the three-minute time limit per person, and that is so that everybody will have an opportunity to be heard and to be heard fairly. Also, please know that Audience Communications is a time that the Board has set aside to listen. However, it's not a question-and-answer session. Should we have other questions for you, we can get back in contact with you. Also, there are specific roles that the Board of Education has and specific roles that Administration has, and those roles determine who you may expect a response from if you're approaching the Board with your communications. The responsibilities of the Board of Education are to, first, hire and evaluate the superintendent; second, to set policy for the district; and, third, to set the long-term goals or strategic planning for the district and match the budget up to those goals. Those are exclusively the roles of the Board of Education. All of the day-to-day operations of the district lie with the superintendent and the staff and administration of our district. So if your question or concern lies in an area that pertains directly to the Board responsibility, you can expect a response back from the Board. And if your question or concern lies with more of a day-to-day operations issue, you can expect a response back from the superintendent on your concern. The first person who would like to approach the Board for Audience Communication is Jennifer Lamb. Jennifer?
Hi. Good evening. Is this me?
It's you.
Either way.
There you go. Welcome.
Thank you. Well, my name is Jenny Lamb. It's my 10th year in LPS, and I represent teachers who live with some fear and ambiguity, who keep vigil for a dreaded pink slip. Year after year, we ignore job insecurity and continue to excel at what we do best: teaching children. I bring you my story tonight to remind you, teachers are humans, too. The uncertainty, the upheaval in staffing, and the stress all take a toll. Stagnant wages and fluctuating teaching assignments do not honor the incredible experience and expertise of your teaching staff. I urge you to value your teachers and invest in us. I've taught high school, middle school, and elementary. To complete my master's in special education, I spent a summer teaching in juvenile detention. People ask, "Weren't you scared to be locked inside juvie?" Actually, nothing scares me more than losing the job I love so much. Most people imagine some form of financial stability when they grow up. I'm 33 and still imagining. I hope someday just to pay off my undergraduate loans. In fact, most springs, I try to imagine what my next school year might look like, since the stamp of reasonable assurance of continued employment on my paycheck has often been followed up with the news that, instead of being laid off, I'm being surplus and my fall schedule is still unknown. Most telling is how routine Administration now considers layoffs. In January 2010, I was laid off at mid-year for the district's protest of the state's funding cuts. The principal called me at home to help reduce the shock of the layoff. My union made concessions, and I got my job back before second semester started. Another year, the principal scheduled a meeting on my planning period, arrived with a box of tissues, and told me he imagined his own daughter receiving a pink slip as he prepared to talk with me about it. Yet, as the layoff process has become more normalized, delivering the news has devolved into the principal simply dropping by while I'm teaching class. The message essentially boiled down to, "You may or may not have a job after this year, but keep up the good work." To be the best teacher I can be, I've pursued additional education. I'm certified in English, German, ESL, and Special Education. Some of my endorsements are secondary, while others are K-12. Because of my multiple certifications, you can find me trying to allay the concerns of my colleagues each spring, when I jokingly shrug and say, "Who knows what I'll teach next year?" I have continually met my evaluation goals, improved my test scores, and expanded my skills as an educator. As an English teacher, I earned a highly effective rating on my yearly evaluation, and within weeks, I was moved to Special Ed. I'm going to do my best no matter where I'm placed, but we can all agree: we get better at something the more we practice. Teachers find better resources and hone our craft. Jostling us out of departments or grade levels resets the classroom's progress and reduces the district's success. We're in this together. We all agree LPS should be known for the outstanding education students receive. So again, I urge you to value your teachers and invest in us. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker at Audience Communication is Daniel Yowell. Good evening.
Good evening, President Burton, members of the Board, Superintendent Oakley. My name is Daniel Yowell, and I've been a teacher in Livonia Public Schools for six years. I currently teach at the Livonia Career Technical Center, and I've also taught at the Western Wayne Skill Center and Frost Middle School. I began my teaching career as a resource room teacher at a charter school in Detroit, where I was an at-will employee, working on annual contracts with no consistent pay scale or assurance of employment from year to year. Uncomfortable with the idea of staying in such an uncertain job situation, I sought employment in an established, reputable school district that I believe could promise stability and security for me and my family. That district was LPS. I'll never forget when I accepted my offer in August 2010 and looked at the salary schedule. I remember the pride and comfort I felt seeing a clearly defined pathway to the top of the pay scale that would reward my professional growth over time, allowing me to earn a decent, sustainable living while continuing to serve the community as an educator. I never thought I would make a fortune, but I felt confident that I had found where I would spend the rest of my career. As I look back on that moment today, I realize how naive I was. Today, because of salary step freezes, I earn $10,000 less annually than I would if we had received annual steps. That would be a 23% raise if added to my current salary. As my abilities as an educator and years of service continue to grow, my compensation remains stagnant, one step above the bottom of the ladder. I fully understand the financial challenges facing our district, and as someone who has been laid off multiple times, I'm grateful for our leadership's efforts to keep teachers employed. However, for this to be a sustainable, long-term career, there must be some way to invest in teachers' longevity and growth in the profession. My experience in Livonia has given me tremendous opportunities to hone my craft. Although it was the result of being laid off several times due to low seniority, I've had the privilege of teaching in general and special education in middle school, high school, and center-based settings. I've taught students ranging in age from 12 to 26, and as part of my current position, I even provide professional development services to career technical education teachers across the region on literacy integration. I also currently serve as school improvement chair for my building. In every assignment I've been given, I have excelled and worked hard, and these experiences, coupled with the master's degree I earned to extend my professional growth, have helped me develop into a versatile, accomplished veteran educator with a great deal to offer our students. I love the work that I do. I'm passionate about it, and it is very fulfilling. However, current financial realities are pushing me to strongly consider leaving the profession. On one hand, I've long considered pursuing opportunities in Administration, but taking out additional student loans on top of my current debt burden for my master's degree doesn't seem financially responsible at my current salary. The future looks so bleak that I'm even considering leaving education altogether. It's something I'm reluctant to do, but what choice do I have? I share this with you today not for the purpose of self-promotion, but to accentuate the fact that I'm just one of many experienced, talented teachers with similar credentials in this district, many of whom are coming to the unfortunate realization that we are at a crossroads in our careers. We are now in our primes, but we are being paid like rookies. We are innovators, we are mentors, and we are the future leaders of the district, but if our salary schedule is a ladder with the top 10 of its 12 rungs removed, if there's no way to climb it and no intervention in sight, as we look ahead five years, 10 years, what choice do we have but to cut our losses and walk away? I don't like to talk about our profession this way.
Mr. Yowell, I'm sorry to interrupt. If you could wrap it up, I appreciate it.
Sure. Thank you. As much as I love what I do, I need to be able to send my son to college, pay off my loans, and maybe even actually retire someday. If I could see a path forward with the restoration of our annual salary steps and gain the confidence to stop grappling with this agonizing decision and pour my energy into my work as an educator, that would give me an option here, and I would be able to make this choice. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anybody else in the audience who would like to address the Board at this time? Seeing none, the next item on our agenda is Committee of the Whole. And the item that we have for Committee of the Whole this evening is a review of our Plant Moran-Cressa study. And Mrs. Oakley, I'm going to turn the meeting over to you.
Thank you. So I'd like to invite our guests from Plant Moran-Cressa to join us at the table. And Ms. Abbey, our Assistant Superintendent for Business and Operations. So as our friends from Plant Moran-Cressa join us, I'll just remind you of who we have here this evening. So we have Paul Terrio from Plant Moran-Cressa, who is distributing binders of information for you, and Mr. Paul Wills, who you may recall spent quite a bit of time with us at the beginning of our bond work and is going to be working as the lead on this project with us. And then Scott Smith, who is also here, who we'll see back at the table in just a bit as we talk about some of our bond issues. So Board of Education, as you may recall, in December, we commissioned with Plant Moran-Cressa to complete two studies. We asked them to complete a thorough and comprehensive enrollment study that would provide for our district enrollment projections out for approximately the next five years. We also concurrently asked them to conduct a study of our facilities and to do a full assessment of the use and capacity of each K-12 facility and indeed all school buildings or buildings in general that we own as part of our property. They have done very diligent work over the past three months and have a compiled report to share with us just some broad strokes about that this evening. Ms. Abbey's going to give us just a little bit of background to remind us where we were at that time in December, when we talked about being mid-course in the bond and why we were embarking on this work. And then after we go through some of this information, I'd like to come back and share with you some of our next steps that involve our stakeholder committee that we've pulled together that will begin its work to delve into all of this data beginning next Monday. But I can do that as part of our next steps at the end. So at this time, I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Abbey to just give us, again, just to refresh us where we were in December and why we began this study, and then turn it over to Mr. Wills to walk us through this information.
Thank you very much. Good evening, everyone. You'll recall that when we started to talk about this even generally back in the fall, even before we actually hired Plant Moran-Cressa, what we were talking about was the fact that we are really kind of a little bit towards the downside of the bond. We're past the midpoint, and what we wanted to do at this time was to take this opportunity to really take a hard look at all of our remaining projects, all of our building capacity. And you'll recall that this is partially in response to making sure that we are good fiduciaries of the bond funds that we've been entrusted with. So as we look forward for the remaining spending of the funds, you know, we've sold the second series of bonds, we now have all of our cash in hand, that we be good fiduciaries of the funds, take a good look at all of our enrollment, our building capacities, and make sure as we go through next steps, in other words, we've settled for this summer what our projects are for the summer of 2016, or our Phase III projects, but as we look forward to our Phase IV projects, as we're getting ready to start doing the architectural work on those, that we have done a thorough look to make sure that we're doing everything that we need to do and nothing that we don't need to do, and that we're taking care of the bonds and the bonds that we've been entrusted with appropriately. So that was really the main impetus of doing that, as well as looking at our enrollment and saying, as you all know, as the Board was part of this process well, saying, "What schools are we looking at next, and should we be doing those?" So we talked about this summer, we made the decision to go forward with all of the schools that we're doing this summer, that we will certainly need those schools for future enrollment for the decisions that we've made so far, but let's stop, step back, take a look, and make sure that we're making good decisions. So to that end, we involved Plant Moran-Cressa because, at that point, as you all know, they have already been in all of our buildings once or twice, and I think Mr. Terrio said he's now done the 2.9 million square feet three times. So it feels like they really, in all seriousness, we really felt like they were the group that had a handle, you know, one, helping us with the bond issue, two, helping us with the sinking fund facilities assessment that they did for us, again, going in all of the buildings, and then, three, going back, and, I mean, they know our schools, they know our programs, they know our principals, they know our little quirks and where we have what programs and where, and so we really felt that they were really the best group to do that. I think when you see the detailed level of work that they've been doing, you'll agree as well. The binder that Mrs. Oakley has in front of her is a draft of what all of the detail will look like tonight. You just have a summary of it. This is every school or will have every school in it when they're complete. So this will be the work that the committee that Mrs. Oakley will talk about again later will be working with. So they will have all that level of detail.
Just to make a quick note about enrollment, too. So as we've taken a look at that in our district, one of the things that we know is when the district first began its work for the bond and completed the long-term facilities assessment in 2010, which was really, began the work and was the impetus to move forward with a request for our community, which they generously approved in 2013. Since that initial time of looking at that facility study, we are down approximately 1,500 students since that time. And I believe, as we talked about that in the fall with the Board of Education, that was another piece of data that was important to you in that, as we looked forward, some of the questions that you had were, "Do we anticipate a continued enrollment decline as we move into the next year, three years, five years? Do we see that stemming at all?" And so, again, the expertise that Plant Moran-Cressa has to be able to utilize metrics that are available to them and to be able to use that data to get very specific projections and predictions as we move forward was something that we felt would be invaluable. So for not only for planning for Phase IV and Phase V of the bond work, but also for the very important work that the Board has and the district administration has with regard to budgets moving forward. So just a little bit of background information. Again, I know most of that you are very, very familiar with, but really wanted to set the stage for why we did commission this work through Plant Moran-Cressa. So Paul, if you'd like to get us started.
Thank you, Superintendent Oakley. Again, what you have in front of you is a draft of our preliminary findings, and I'd really like to start actually with the table of contents, because I don't want to just go as methodical and as judicious as we have to, but obviously, there's a lot of information here, so feel free to make this as interactive as possible going forward. In Section 1, we do have a kind of a high-level executive summary and our preliminary findings, which we'll go through those several pages. We would also like to go through the utilization and show you the process that we went through relative to each of the individual schools, by grade level, by school-type level, so elementary, middle school, high schools. And then shift gears a little bit and talk actually about the enrollment-projection process going forward. So with that, if you can turn to Section 1, which is the executive summary. As we mentioned, you know, the district does have 27 existing school buildings that are utilized for curriculum, if you will, and these are obviously, programs are included in the bond program. So it's a really good point relative to, as Lisa mentioned, we're about, you know, 60% starting that downward slide, and again, taking that snapshot, say, okay, where are we at from a facility standpoint going forward? So we actually had a chance to go through, it's not in your report, but there's two 11-by-17s, you can see the color-coordinated codes. So everything that's in blue is a general education classroom that's dedicated to the building. We'll get into that scenario as we go through it. But one of the things we found is there's also some other support classrooms: art, music, resource rooms, early LPK-type programs. There's some that are more program-driven, not necessarily building-driven. So we've had a chance to meet with each of the building administrators, again, kind of confirm some of the usage and some of the programmatic needs of the buildings with the administration. So we're almost to the point of giving this document nailed down, but we've actually had the utilization kind of high-level, and we'll get into that here shortly. One of the things we found is that, overall, the buildings are, classrooms are fairly sized. So again, you have 750 to 900 square foot classrooms. We utilized a goal of 26 to 30 students in a classroom. So oftentimes, people ask us, "Well, what's the standard?" Well, really, it's up to the district's policies and procedures. So again, you have academic goals. As a parent of three children, I probably wouldn't want 35, 40 kids in my classroom. And I'd love to have 17 or 18 kids, but we know from a budgetary standpoint, sometimes that's very difficult. So we use that 26 to 30, again, 26 at the elementary level and kind of ramping up as we go through each of those classrooms. Collectively, as a district, you have about 969 total classrooms. Those are broken down really, again, by elementary grades. Traditionally, what the state of Michigan wants you to have is roughly 8 to 85% utilization across the board. We're here to say that at your middle school and high school level, you're right at those ranges, which is great. At the elementary level, there's several schools that are going to need some further detailing of, is it really a program dedicated to the building, or is it something that could be reallocated? And we'll get into some of that detail here as we go forward. Really, the goal of the process, again, is to take some high-level observations and benchmarking, again, to allow the Board to make decisions relative to utilizations, bond planning. We are glad that you're doing it now for the 17s, where you're not doing it for potentially things that may take place this summer, so we appreciate that going forward. Again, we took a look at all the grade levels concurrently. We've also overlaid it with the enrollment projections by each of the individual grades. That's why Superintendent Oakley's book got really thick real quick. But we're here tonight really to kind of show you our high-level overview of the utilization piece, some of the deliverables. So if someone from the community or administration says, "You know, how are we really using Buchanan? What classrooms are really truly there?" It seems to be full. It is full. But if you really take a look at, you know, dedicated programs, maybe some support spaces, and again, some of those, I call nuances of particular elementaries, middle schools and high schools. And so at the end of the day, we're still in the process of finalizing that, but high-level, from utilization standpoint, middle school, high schools, you're at the 8 to 85%, and you're just below 70% at the elementary schools, which, again, if you take a look at it, there are programs that could easily be allocated accordingly. And we'll get into some of those details here shortly. So at the end of the day, PK through 6, as I mentioned, there was 969 total classrooms. The district has 504 classroom spaces, which are in the PK through 6th grade facilities. On page 3 of the summary, you can see that, overall, the elementary schools are right around that 65% utilization. Middle school findings, the 7th and 8th grades, there's 125 classroom spaces. That's right around 68 and 95% utilized, so again, the higher percent utilization. And you'll even see some of that with the enrollments as we get into the specific grade level enrollments going forward. At the high school levels, there's 271 classroom spaces, of which 254 are being used for general education and support. So again, right around the 80% utilization for the high schools, which is where you want to be. We also took a look at some other districts' facilities relative to Career Tech Center, the Ford Skills, Perrinville, and also Jackson. Again, looking at it from a programmatic standpoint, are those programs that could potentially be there? Can they grow? Could they be relocated? So again, not finalized with those, but we've had a chance to walk through each of those facilities, again, meeting with the administration, really confirm the numbers that are each of those facilities, and ultimately overlap it going forward. So taking a look district-wide, from the enrollment standpoint, there's approximately 17,710 PK students within the boundaries. And we'll get into the specific demographics here, but from a high-level standpoint, people say, "Well, we have X amount of students." We're actually able to provide the breakdown of who is attending LPS schools, who's attending perhaps other public schools, what's the loss rate to potentially the private schools, and some of that detail going forward. As one of the four demographers recognized by the Department of Treasury, we do things a little bit differently, where we're actually taking a look at the number of housing units, the housing transitions. We are seeing an upward trend of the number of families actually moving in, so even though the birth rate was on a downward trend for the last five or six years, we're actually here to say it's kind of leveled off and actually starting to go up in the next five years. So some people, as we get in aroma, say, "Well, we've been losing for all these years. Are we at the bottom?" And we think you're kind of at the bottom of the birth rate for Western Wayne County. But more importantly, Livonia is able to attract families to move into the district, and you're able to see that as you look through your upper elementary, middle school levels going forward. From a building-specific enrollment projections, again, we just gave you one sample tonight. Again, as we really take a look, you can imagine doing 27 individual enrollment projections by three different method levels, but again, we're just here to give you a high-level overview going forward. So really, our recommendations, in the preliminary sense and draft right now are, again, you have some opportunities at the elementary level to really look at your utilization a little more in-depth, overlap that with the utilization and enrollments, what we see for the trends for the next five years, to help you make some of those financial planning activities that I know Ms. Abbey's in the process of doing. More importantly, as you look at, what are those bond projects in 2017, 18? Where are those facilities that are higher utilized, perhaps? And as Superintendent Oakley mentioned, next Monday, there's a kickoff meeting with the committee of 25 to 30 individuals, I believe?
Forty-two.
Forty-two individuals. And those are stakeholders within the community. Our job is not to actually come up with the committee, our job is to facilitate those questions, so present the data points, really let the committee and the community members really make sure what's important to LPS going forward. So with that being said, the utilization, we're probably say 85% there, but again, just want to give you a level of sense that we've had a chance to walk through 27 facilities. The middle school, high school levels, you spent money well. Those will be utilized, you know, in the next five to 10 years pretty holistically. It's at those last series of elementary schools really taking a hard look at the bond dollars of how do you want to spend those dollars going forward. And as Ms. Abbey mentioned, the enrollment projections is important, because with students comes your foundational allowance, and so trying to be as conservative or accurate as possible is that. So that's the executive summary. If there's no questions, what I'd like to do is just show you a quick sample of floor plan in Section 2, in no particular order other than alphabetical. And I won't go through all 27 schools, but in Section 2, the first slide you have is Buchanan Elementary School. And one of the things you'll see is not just the room numbers, but we've also allocated what is the grade, particular grade, or what is also the individual support. So you'll see, for instance, health clinics, speech, music, center programs, lounges, computer labs, EST. So we actually gave you a key on the lower left-hand side to really show you at Buchanan, you are currently utilizing every single square inch. The question is, are there programmatic things that could potentially be relocated to either fill up or potentially look at other alternative uses for those spaces going forward? So we're not saying if it's a right program or wrong program, we're just giving you that snapshot in time. Again, we've had a chance to confirm this with the building administrators, again, bounce this off of the administration as well. And tonight was just our presentation of, at your leisure, if you want to go through all 27 floor plans. The high school gets a little more difficult just because it's a bigger facility. We try to obviously blow it up so you can see sections of the building, but holistically give you that idea.
So will you remind him on the black and the red? Then the black is...
Yes. Yeah, so the black is your general education K-5-type program. So you'll see there, you'll have kindergarten classrooms in the lower left, so you currently have two sections. You have your first grades kind of at the lower half of the facility, kind of rooms 25 and 18. The second-grade classrooms, you have your two sections there. Your third grade, you actually have three sections in that building, but then fourth grade, you drop back to two sections. So we call those building-specific. These are programs that more than likely would stay. If you said, "Hey, I need a third section for next year's kindergarten class, where could we potentially use it?" Oftentimes, districts use this map and this information to say, "You know what? I've got an ESL program that is not building-specific, I can move it over to here," or "It's a ISD program, and it really should be over here." So again, that snapshot in time that really allows the district and administration to plan out how do you use your facilities to the highest utilization, so.
I think another thing to point out, I know that you shared with us, is we asked Plant Moran-Cressa to represent based on their review of every school and their meetings with the administrators, that even if a program or a staff member was utilizing a classroom that could be potentially repurposed again for a full-size, 25-students-in-a-classroom, to have that reflected on here. And so you will see, as you look from floor plan to floor plan, there are some schools where perhaps a speech and language teacher may have a full-size classroom that they're able to utilize. There are some that may have a smaller office space that they utilize, and so that may vary from school to school. So although the key is the same, you can generally see by the map and the way that it's laid out whether or not that particular service provider or staff member is utilizing a full-size classroom. Okay?
And so to give you an example, as of the fall count of 15, Buchanan had 304 students. And so again, kind of looking at that 25 to 26 at the elementary and kind of ramping up for each grade, you know, Buchanan really, the capacity's probably in the 400, 450 range, again, depending on the number of classrooms. So you see there's, from a general education classroom, you're using all the classrooms, but again, from a total building utilization, really diving into the details of that. And again, that's part of this overall analysis, is how do you start moving some of those And, again, that's part of this overall analysis, is how do you start moving some of those pieces and policies to make sure you're getting a true, accurate utilization going forward? So, I think Superintendent O'Quist mentioned that the black is that dedicated to the building, and then some of the reds are obviously some of those more ancillary support or building support spaces that you could look at.
Paul, that three oh four, does that include all the center students? Or all the students total, or just the general education?
That is the...
I think that would be with the centers.
That's what the center's correct.
Because those are local center programs.
Okay. Thank you.
If that's incorrect, don't you know, but I'm...
No.
Okay. No, I was just wondering. So, thank you.
So, again, not going on to cast, but we just thought it'd be helpful, as you're going through the draft report, just understanding as you start looking at different buildings, we've kind of allocated it based on those two parameters and then with the educational goals of the twenty-six to thirty students going forward. If there's not anything left on the utilization, I would like to shift gears a little bit into the student enrollment, because this is oftentimes, people say, okay, well, how am I going to fill up my buildings? Is it with different programs, are our kids coming to the district in droves, if we have other opportunities? So, actually, I'm going to move into section three in the booklet. And within the pupil enrollment projection, there's actually a sub-table of contents, if you will. You see that right after the cover page. There's really five sections to the demographic enrollment projections underneath section three.
Just waiting for everybody to get there.
Yep. This one, we're going to go a little bit slower and actually kind of by page, if you will, if I could be, granted, on time. So, section one is really the school district boundary. So, if you recall, when someone does a demography, they look at a one-mile or a three-mile or five-mile radius. We're actually able to draw the district's boundaries and come up with what's happening within that black polygon, number of families, number of students, number of students that attend public schools, what's the zero to five, the six to elevens, the twelve to seventeens, the eighteen to twenty fours? What's the discretionary income? How does that impact enrollment going forward? So we call that section one. Section two is actually, how do you compare to some of the neighboring communities? So, for instance, what's happening in Wayne County? What's happening in the state of Michigan? Obviously, we're not going to go through each of those individuals, but there's a lot of great data in there relative to, a lot of the same information we'll cover here shortly. Section three, it's a shorter section, but it just shows you our methodology, and we'll kind of overview that as to how we do enrollment projections more specifically. And then, section four, we're going to take a look at the last seven years of historical data. So how do the districts get your funding? You have your fall count, your spring count, you send that up to the state, that gets audited, and you get your foundational allowance. We're able to use that data and then create an algorithm to give you an enrollment projection for the next five years. Oftentimes, people say, why can't you project past five years? And those kids haven't been born yet, so it's difficult for us to get there.
Hard to guess.
But we've got a program where we're working on. And then, section five is really a sample. We picked Roosevelt, but really, what's your feeder patterns look like? And then, we just picked Roosevelt kind of as a sample of the detail that you'll get in the full report going forward. So with that, I'm going to turn to section one. And as Ms. Abbey pointed, right behind the section one cover, there is...
It's ahead of you, sir.
I know, that's okay. You're having the test. This polygon should look very, very familiar. It's the district-wide map that kind of shows you your boundaries. The second page after that, it's just the location of your schools within that boundary, again, with your twenty-seven facilities accordingly. Right after those two maps, at the top of it, you'll see School District Data Book, General Characteristics Profile. This is your demographic profile for Livonia Public Schools polygon that we just showed you two slides previously. So let's start at the top. Your total population within that black polygon is one hundred and ten thousand nine hundred and ten individuals. Comparison area one, which is the secondary column, that is Wayne County. So there's one, just over one point seven-six million, or one hundred, one point seven-six million people in Wayne County. And the comparison area number two, on the far right, that's the state of Michigan, just under ten million individuals in the entire state. We take a look at the population, so you're on urban population, that's your core-based statistical area of information. We're able to give you a demographic breakdown by ethnicity. The one thing we also like to take a look at, just below that, is your average median, or, I'm sorry, your median age. So right now, you're at forty-four point seven within that black polygon. So people say, okay, what does that mean to us? Traditionally, districts that we show significant growth, that is usually in the high thirties. So, for instance, South Line is experiencing significant growth. Their demographic profile for their community is at the thirties, which means that family household is obviously producing more kids than people in their forties and fifties, which makes sense, you know? Most people aren't starting families in their forties and fifties. So, again, we take a look at that, because, again, Wayne County, the average is thirty-eight, and then, obviously, the state of Michigan's thirty-nine point four. Right below that, we take a look at the total number of housing units. So there's forty-eight thousand one hundred and twenty-three total housing units in your primary area, of which forty-five thousand four hundred and fourteen are occupied. So you have a very small percentage of what I'll call unoccupied or availability to, let's say, transition hundreds or thousands of families, if you will. We also know that you're relatively built out here in Livonia. There's not a lot of vacant spaces unless you're selling old school properties and things of that nature that you could put fifty to maybe go a hundred homes. Below that, we take a look at the median household income value, which is at one hundred and fifty-three thousand seven hundred and eighty-six dollars. The average median household income is just at seventy-five thousand, comparative to the state or even Wayne County, which is just above, you know, fifty thousand dollars. So, again, from a discretionary income standpoint, we'll start taking a look at those percentages of those that are able to potentially afford a private education or an alternative education other than public schools. The next section is actually what we really like to focus on, is the total number of families. So currently, there's thirty thousand seventy-five families. The family is classified as one parent, one child, or it could be one parent, multiple children. It could be a grandparent and a child. It could be an aunt or uncle with a child. So, again, it's not necessarily two parents and a child. It could be any ratio or portion of a child with an adult, basically, adults who are just considered a family from a demographic standpoint. Total number of households, again, that forty-five thousand four fourteen, which is above, what's the average size? It's two point four one. The median is two point six. Again, what's interesting is the average age of householder is fifty-five point five. So, again, everyone's like, well, how did forty-four point seven? That's everyone that's renting or leasing or living with mom and dad, but average household age is fifty-five point five. More importantly, is how many of those households have school-aged children? That's nineteen thousand twenty-two total households. What percentage of those have school-aged children? So people are like, well, what does that mean? So basically, five to eighteen are your school age, but there's the zero to four component. But more importantly, there's the eighteen to twenty-four component. So if my students are in college, I'm still considered a family, even though if my son or daughter is at community college or at a, you know, commuting to a university of that nature. The number of children per household, per household unit is point nine-three, point four-two. So if someone says, if I need to raise a thousand students, how do I get it? Well, this ratio, you'd have to basically build two thousand homes. So, that kind of gives you an idea of some of the magnitude of some of these numbers going forward. More importantly, the median year of people moving into the school district is actually two thousand and four. So in the last ten years, people have actually come into the boundary. Some districts that are well-established, that is in the late nineteen nineties. Some newer districts is like two thousand and seven, two thousand and eight. So, again, that looks at the number of families that are transitioning, which is why we're seeing actually a trend at that middle school and high school level of actually staying pretty steady, even though your enrollment at kindergarten levels is down a little bit from where you've been previously. So, again, those are some of the dynamics that we look at relative to the households. Right below that, you'll see the enrolled school-aged children in PK twelve. So there's seventeen thousand seven hundred and ten. Again, at the public pre-primary, so this could be Livonia Public Schools or any other public institution, is just under sixty-five percent. The capture rate at the private pre-primary is thirty-five percent. You'll see as Wayne County and the state kind of are in similar ratios of basically a two-third, one-third type going forward. As you move into the K-12, eighty-seven point seven-nine percent choose public school, while twelve point twelve-one percent choose the private school. In Western Wayne County and in the state of Michigan, it's right around ten percent, so nine point two-five and ten point four-one. Some districts, we work with that number as low as eight percent, some we work with as high as twenty-four, twenty-five percent. So, again, you look at private opportunities, you know, some districts have five, six, seven, eight different opportunities from K through twelve, others only have one or two, maybe at the elementary level. So, again, just looking at those ratios, and, again, this is our first year doing our enrollment demographics. It would be interesting to see maybe what that ratio was three or four or five years ago. But we do see with the improved economy, discretionary income is up. People oftentimes will have that available discretionary income to potentially choose private school, which I think you, I think, historically, around maybe ten...
Right around ten.
Eleven percent. So, again, we factor that in going forward. I'm not going to go through the next several because it's household educational attainment, employment opportunities, housing values on page two. But what I'd really like to do is actually transition all the way into tab two, which is what we look at as the next five years' trend. Yes, Ms. Abbey?
I do have one other question. These enrollment figures are total number of students in our area in Wayne County. Does that factor in homeschooled students also, or do they're just students that are enrolled?
Yeah, the nineteen thousand, that's every single eligible student, so...
Student-aged.
Correct. So it's homeschool, charter school, school of choice, neighboring school districts, LPS students, everyone that's school-age eligible, so.
Perfect.
Yep. And sometimes, well, I see some people doing some quick math. Okay, if we have sixteen thousand students, it's like, what's our loss rate to the charters? Or what's our loss rate? And we're able to actually kind of get some close levels of, this is the number that you're potentially losing to other public schools. But the homeschool is also included in that, and then, obviously, the private schools, a tuition-based type program, so.
Right. Thank you.
Yep. So in section two, section two actually has three tabs. Section two A is what I'll call the Livonia Public Schools, what's happening in that core-based statistical area. We're going to go through that in some detail. Tabs B and C are actually the state of Michigan and Wayne County, so we won't go through those unless there's some specific details. But what this allows us to do is do a five-year look back to two thousand and ten, but more importantly, what does that five-year trend look like going forward? So one of the things you'll notice is that total population, we're looking at just under a one percent increase in total population.
Just to make sure that we're all on the same page. So it's entitled Livonia Public Schools: Demographic Trends and Analysis Summary.
Yeah, thank you. And then, you'll see the three columns, the two thousand and ten, two thousand and fifteen, and then, two thousand and twenty. And then, on the far-right side, what you have is basically the next five years' variance, so either an increase or a decrease based on those numbers going forward. And so, again, we start kind of with total population. We do see about a one thousand thirteen-person increase, if everyone sees that, from this year into two thousand and twenty. If you take a look at the zero to five years, so, again, taking a look at a decrease of roughly five point six percent in the next five years, or roughly three hundred and forty-three students less, two hundred and twenty-nine less at sixth through eleventh, so about a three point one percent increase. And then, twelve to seventeen-year-olds is a five point three percent increase. And then, at the eighteen to twenty-four-year-olds, there's a thirty person or a point three percent increase. And so, one of the things that you can keep in mind, those eighteen to twenty-four-year-olds, even if you graduate from high school, you're still, if you're still living at home, or you have your own apartment, you're commuting to work, we're still capturing you from that standpoint of being in that age category relative to that boundary. So, that's kind of the downward trend we see on just the median age, if you will. But the good part is, we look at total number of households. We are looking at a two percent increase in the total number of households, about a nine hundred and twenty-one person increase. If you take a look at the number of households broken down, so one of the things that you see is the two- and three-person households is going up pretty significantly in the next five years. The number of five-person households is actually going up eight point two percent. And so, what is that telling us? I don't think people are moving in with three or four kids. I think what's happening is that kids are graduating and staying within the boundary. So that's why we see that five-person increase. Some districts, we see seven- and eight-person households increasing. That may be people are moving with grandparents or multiple families are reliving one's housing. It depends on the demographic and the financial conditions of some districts. But right now, we're seeing an upward trend at the two- and three-person households and also at the five-person, as I mentioned, the six- and seven-person, we're seeing a slight uptick there as well. So even though the total number of kids, the age-wise is going down, the number of housing and the number of households is going up. And so that's why we're able to take our enrollments and adjust it based on those demographics. So that kind of takes care of the age and the households. The family size and family age, as I mentioned, fifty-three point eight, so it's going up about point three percent from the median age of the households going forward. Income profile, as I mentioned, you take a look at the per capita income, it's double digits across the board. That's kind of in the middle of the income profile, right there in the middle of the page. You can see that the number of households with a hundred thousand dollars and more is going up pretty significantly at the very bottom of the page, of up to seven percent. Households of a hundred and fifty to two hundred is going up pretty significantly, and also the two hundred thousand's also going up. But keep in mind, if your son or daughter does graduate and they're working and they're living in your household, that's actually still considered household income. So it's not that people are just getting thousands of dollars, hundreds of thousands of dollars bonuses, it's simply you have more people making money as part of that household income, and that's why we're seeing that increase going forward. Shifting gears a little bit into the second page, again, we've kind of highlighted in blue, so everyone should have that, that blue on the upper right. Again, we are seeing an upward trend at pre-primary and kindergarten of one point eight and two point eight percent. So, again, a slight uptick in the next five years. And again, as we mentioned, the current grades, one through four, five, eight, nine, twelve, those grade levels, we do see a slight downward trend. But more importantly, as I mentioned, we offset that with the number of households and the number of families that we see moving in. So, again, it's, you have a downward trend of the number of kids at those levels, but, again, you'll see at the middle school and the high school level, your numbers are actually steady, are actually going up for the next five years from a trend standpoint. So, good news is, we think you're going to be relatively flat with a slight up increase in the next five years, and we'll kind of get into that detail. But I wanted to show you that breakdown of what the five-year trend looks like relative to each of those independent grade levels. I think the other, there's also some charts that are right behind these that are kind of more graphical. I can imagine for our next presentation, if it's more of a formal board presentation, we'll probably do more of the graphical-type presentation, but you can see some of the trending relative to those dates. You're looking at the zero to five, there's a slight downward trend, but the twelve to seventeen-year-olds, again, a slight downward trend, but, again, the five-year projection we're looking at is relatively flat, if not going up. What I'd like to do is, right before tab three in your book, you're going to see a chart that looks just like this. This is the live births for the last twenty years in Western Wayne County.
Did you say just before tab three?
Right before tab three, correct.
In tab, the last page of tab C.
Correct. And the reason I want to point this chart out is, this is really for the birth rate since nineteen ninety, and so we've actually gone through the most recent, which is two thousand and fourteen. So this actually gets audited by the Department of Community Health. So if you take a look, the high rate was actually nineteen ninety, there were sixteen thousand five hundred and fifty-one live births, and we'll kind of, Paul, why is this important? We're going to actually be able to show you what that capture rate is from a district standpoint, and what does it mean going forward. If you take a look at two thousand, two thousand and one, that's your current ninth-grade year. So you can see your ninth grade is right around that fifteen thousand three hundred middle schools, you start to kind of work your way down. You know, people ask, are we at the bottom of the birth rate downward trend? The answer is yes. So several years ago, thirteen thousand twenty-eight was the lowest birth rate, actually, since nineteen fifty, I think it was, in Western Wayne County. Now, this, it does exclude Detroit. So this is Western Wayne County without the city of Detroit, which we wanted to point out. But you can see in the last two or three years, it's actually gone up to about thirteen thousand four hundred, thirteen thousand five hundred. 13,500. So keep in mind, these are the students that are going to be your potential incoming kindergarten classes in the next zero to five years. So the reason we use this chart is, as Ms. Abbey pointed to, is we started getting into the section three and section four. We can show you what that historical capture rate is, and then also how we've adjusted those enrollment demographics to give you that five-year projection. So with that, section three is a quick two-pager. So as I mentioned, there's four demographers recognized by the Department of Treasury, ourselves, middle cities, Stanford, Midwestern demographics. We do things a little bit differently because we are taking the enrollment and looking at geographical information systems. There's a thing called ESRI, which is actually like a Claritas, a Nielsen Claritas, so if you go to the gas station, you swipe your card, next day you get a coupon in the mail. Like, how do they know what I just bought? Well, we buy that for our commercial clients. And so we're able to say, okay, what does that mean for a school district? So being able to take some of the demographic information, that's how we know the number of households, the number of students, the number of private versus public. So again, that's the more of the demographic piece that we do to adjust those enrollments. So there's a nice, pretty little flow chart that's right behind that section. Again, we take a look at what's happening in the in the community, overall demographics. We do take a look at the last seven years' historical data. We take a look at the live births. Right now, we're kind of in the middle where we've done our five-year trend. We've done our second passive enrollment, that's why this is still draft, but I think we're about 95% ready to go final with this here in the near future, so that way financial planning can be taken into consideration and some other usages of this. There's three different methods that we use. Method one is a six-year historical look from a trending standpoint, so very consistent. So the economy's humming along, and job, job security's going well relative to that. You would probably use a six-year. Method two is a two-year. So if something happened, remember 2008, 910? Like, we'd use a two-year because unemployment, housing foreclosures, et cetera. Method three is really a blended rate, and we'll kind of show you the three different methods as we get to our example. But just be aware that there's three different methods, and then we'll actually highlight that as we get to those slides. But it's not just a quick cohort, it's not just a six-year, but it's really looking at six years plus two, and then there's a blended of three to try to give you the most conservative, most accurate numbers going forward. Section four, there's really two parts. One is the the member history, and I do want to say thank you to Ms. Abbey and her staff for pulling together the last seven years' historical data. So what you'll see, it's a chart that looks like an Excel spreadsheet, it's kind of gray-shaded in the far right, in the lower bottom. So if you take a look in the 2008, 2009 academic year, you'll see it's broken down by grade level, so kindergarten, first, second, third, fourth, other through 12. We also broke out special education, and then obviously as programs come on board, for instance, the Young K, the Japanese program, et cetera, you can kind of see those breakdowns to really give us a full picture of what your total head count is relative to your students. Now, keep in mind, there's two different ways people or students are counted. There's FTE, which is Foundation or Full-Time Equivalency, and then you have your head count. Your head count is your head in the seat, looking at the teacher. So those numbers may be slightly different. So if you're a board member going, I thought we had more FTEs, you may have some part-time sharing, but we were really looking at head count from utilization standpoint, because ultimately, that's how you determine the availability of spaces in the classroom.
I could just add, Paul.
Sure.
Just so you can see, especially in the later academic years, we wanted to, as we looked at utilization and enrollment for both funding purposes and for utilization, we wanted to just kind of carve out some of those special programs so that we could see our K-12 programs. So all the numbers are here, all of our students are listed on this report, we just made a subtotal at the K-12 line, so we could say, like Paul was saying earlier, what's our classroom usage, what's our grade kindergarten one, two, et cetera, through grade 12? And then, as you can see, obviously, all those other programs are very important and are part of our district, but they might have some movement, or they might, like, for example, on our Japanese program, Nijiiro at Taylor, if we'd had those numbers in the K-12, it would have skewed some of those kindergarten numbers in terms of doing trending. So this allows us to have more consistency in our trending as we look back the full six years. So that's why those are pulled out, not because they're not part of our district, or not part of our programming, or not part of our planning, but just so we could have that enrollment a little bit more consistent to do that trend analysis.
And so, again, this is the last seven years' historical data. Again, this is audited by the state, and this is how you got your foundation allowance, based on the head count, and obviously the FTE going forward. So one of the things you'll notice at the kindergarten level, you've right, always been about 800 to 875, 880. So again, the kindergarten level, you've been pretty consistent. One of the things you'll note, in the, let's say, in the 2009 academic year, you had almost 1,500 students graduating from the 12th grade. This year, you're projected to have about 1,100. So again, remember that birth rate that showed that 2,000 birth rate, and then there's a little blip, then there's a blip back down, well, then it's starting to trend back up. You'll see that as we kind of go through here, of the bubbles of, you know, middle school, you actually actually can increase enrollment, middle school and high school stay relatively low, or I'm sorry, relatively level. The question is, is can you continue to transition those houses that we've seen? And the answer currently is yes, and we'll get into that detail here. If you turn to the second page, it's, on the bottom, you'll see page 26 of 320. That thick black line that you see down the middle of the board, if you see that on that sheet, everything to the left of that is your historical data, so right off of that sheet that we just took a look at. And the way this chart works is, on the upper left-hand side, you'll see the birth year, so you'll see the birth year 2004. Right below that, there's 14,642 births. So if I was to flip back to section C right before, you'll see 2004 birth year, there's Livonia Public Schools, based on your kindergarten enrollment that year, you captured 6.02%. Does everyone see that? The next year, you kept-
So the 14,642 was Wayne County except Detroit, correct?
That's correct. Yep.
And so we captured 6.02% of all those 14,642.
Correct. Moving to the next column over, the 2010-11 school year, the birth year was 2005, you captured just under 6%, 5.99%. We extrapolate all the way across, and you can see a little bit of a bump in 2013-14 school year of 6.65. Then last year, it went back down to 6.10, but this year, it's back up to 6.45. And so that just gets you familiar with the number of births, the number of kindergarten, incoming kindergarten students, and then what was your capture rate? So if you take that same bar graph and you look to the right of it, we're anticipating a capture rate of about 6.16%. So again, not 6.45, we think that's a little aggressive. It's not 5.99% because that was your lowest, you know, back in 2011, 12, but we think 6.16% capture rate. More importantly, we then take this information and adjust it based on the community demographics, the number of families. And so what I want to do is, that thick black line, I want to kind of walk you down just that column, just to the left of that if I could, and stop me if I'm confusing or going too slow or too fast. So the 2015 school year, so just to the left of that thick black line, that was the 2010 birth year. There was 13,228, and Livonia Schools captured 6.45%. That kindergarten class was 853. Drop down one row, the kindergarten class was 849. Does everyone see the 849? So right below that, do you see the 103.35%? So you actually had an increase from the previous year, from kindergarten to first grade core, of an increase of 3.35%. So you've attracted more students that came into the district. So what happens is, for whatever reason, people choose to come into Livonia Schools after kindergarten. Maybe they're at a community center, I don't know, whatever, for whatever reason, but you capture 3.35%.
So Paul, if you were just looking at that, and you said, in 2014-15, we had 822 kindergartners, we'd expect 822 first graders, but we actually had 849 first graders.
Correct. Actually, really, yeah, really good examples, when we get from the third grade to fourth grade analysis, it's 100.21, so you want like two students, but that's a great analogy. So you'd expect if you had 100% cohort, the year previously, it kind of works diagonally, if you will, on the chart going forward. First grade to the second grade, there was a 1.45% increase. The second grade to third grade, there was a 5.34% increase. And I think, Ms. Abbey, this is what you're talking about. When you look at fourth and fifth grade, the previous years, those groups literally just, you didn't pick up, you didn't lose, and basically it's 100%. Sixth grade, a slight dip, 99.82%, but seventh, eighth, ninth grade, you can see a 2.25, 1.19, and 11.27. So what's interesting about the eighth to ninth grade, traditionally, again, some of that private schools may stop at the eighth grade, and most times, we, districts that don't have maybe high school competitions, we do see that number very similar to what Livonia has for that, so. And then trending 10th, 11th, 12th grade, very similar to the previous three years. So taking the 2015-16 school year, adding up the cohorts, you had 13,617 K through 12 students, again, broken down by by those various grades. That year-to-year growth, there's a negative 311, so from the previous year, you lost 311 students. The year-to-year growth was just below 2%, 2.23%. Then we also broke out, as I mentioned, special ed, young K, the preschool, shared times transition, for a total of 14,619 students. So again, from utilization standpoint, we're looking at all 14,619 students relative to your 27 facilities. So how does this chart work going forward? Again, we take a look at the last five years of audited birth, live births from the county. We adjust it based on some of the demographic trends we see, and what we're showing is a slight loss next year, but then you pretty much stay level for the next four years after that, with a slight increase in the 2018-19 school year. Where's that growth predominantly coming from? Again, it's going to really be at the upper elementary and the middle school grades. And again, people are choosing Livonia School, but maybe potentially as their second home. So maybe they bought somewhere, you know, early before the crash, guess what, the housing values back up, they want to get into a more established community, more established district. They're coming into that upper elementary, middle school level, which is traditionally a second home, not your starter home, but usually that second or second home going forward. So at the end of the day, we're able to, again, take the the current K programs, again, we only have the last five years of live births, but even at the upper grades, the high school level, we're actually able to go out to 25, 26. So again, as you start looking at utilization, you have the numbers and the information there to make some informed decisions relative to enrollments. And as I mentioned, from a high school standpoint, middle school standpoint, you're pretty much within state recommended ranges of that 80%, 80% utilization, 85% utilization. Again, at the elementary schools, you can see if, you know, some of the trends of, we know we're pretty much where we're at for the next five years, so it gives you an opportunity again to look at programs, I think, more holistically at that level. I'm not going to go through the the third slide, which is more of the grade compilations, but I thought it'd be important, it's actually page 28 of the 320, it's, basically takes that eye chart that we just gave you, and we put it more of a graphical form. And so as you can see, the way it's broken down is the blue diamonds is your K4, again, relatively level, right around 4,500 students. The 5-6 program, again, pretty much leveled off, just over 2,000, maybe 2,100 students.
That's a purple.
Seven and eight is your, I guess it'd be dark blue. You know, slight uptick in 2019, again, that's kind of that bubble working its way through. And then nine through 12, we have you just over 5,000 students in the next five to 10 years going forward. So again, some people ask, how conservative or how accurate are your data points? Historically, we're right above 99%. I think with Utica Community Schools, we missed it by 10 students out of their 28,000 students. Bloomfield, we missed it by two. Clarkson, for this year, we actually got spot on, which is great. So this is our first year doing for it, is doing enrollment for Livonia Schools, so for us, allows us to create that benchmark. And again, to make some of those adjustments and those tracking. So again, we're looking at the housing, we're looking at the unoccupied, the occupied, job starts, et cetera, going forward to really hone in. But from a conservative standpoint, you can see we're not looking at a 6.5% capture rate, you know, right above 6%, which is conservative. And again, I'd obviously like to track that private to public, and if there's any other competing entities that maybe pop up that aren't currently in place, may have effect on it. We've seen that with some other neighboring districts where, you know, competition shows up, and it's like, hey, okay, there's 80 kids, and, you know, parents have choices, and, you know, people, for whatever reason, choose differently, so, yes.
On the chart that we were just looking at, would you please explain the dotted lines?
Sure. So the dotted line is actually a three-year moving trend. And so what the trend is, it's, you look back two and then project one, and so you'll see sometimes the number's below the trend line, and sometimes it's above, but it just gives you an idea of like a three-year moving trend of what that dash dotted line is, so that's a good question.
Paul?
Yes.
The the other three rather large districts that you just mentioned, Clarkson, Utica, Bloomfield, and your accuracy with doing those districts, had you done the demographics for those districts in the past? Or was that a first time, as it is with Livonia?
Yeah, so Utica is our second year, and then Bloomfield, we've been doing it for the last nine years. Obviously, they have different, they went from two high schools to one, and a bunch of other interesting things.
Oh, yeah.
We've been doing enrollment projections for Plymouth Canton for the last five or six years, with very conservative, very accurate enrollments. Wall Lake, so yeah, it's been the demographic piece and then the enrollment piece, but Utica's actually our second year.
Okay.
So.
And our, I mean, you've done a lot of districts. Have you found, I would think that you would find that you would have a higher degree of accuracy with districts that you've done multiple years in a row.
You know what's interesting? Like I said, Utica, like I said, we did it last year, and they said, is this, are the numbers real? I said, well, yeah, we think they're pretty real, and we went to the board meeting in January, and they said, well, you missed it by 10. We're like, 10%? They said, no, 10 kids. So we're like, it's pretty close, out of 29,000 or 28,000 students. Traditionally, we're, if there's something not major, so I'll give an example, South Lyon, we thought they were going to grow, we didn't realize they were going to grow that much. And I think they built over 2,000 homes in their district. We thought it was more like 1,500 homes. So they actually accelerated our enrollment. That was like a first year to second year, like, hey, we beat our, beat the enrollments. Another district, our first year, we were probably at 99.2, 99.3%, but we're able to pinpoint like what it was. So one district in particular, large, you know, 18,000 student, it's our first year, the following year, they said, okay, you missed it by, you know, 1.2%. Okay, why? Actually, they had a capture rate of 2% from the private to public. And they asked us, why are people choosing our school district? I'm like, because you're a great district? I mean, sure, you know, but I, those are the anecdotal things, we just can't answer why they're choosing, but, you know, we looked at it and said, for the last seven years, you're at 18%, and this year at 16% that chose, you know, private versus public. It's anomalies like that that may throw our enrollment, but for a district like Livonia has been well-established, and I don't say there's a lot of opportunity for massive residential growth or transitioning. We feel pretty confident the numbers that we're presenting here.
One piece of property that has been recently developed is what we refer to as the old Clyde Smith property, Anderson Road, south of Churchill. Was that piece of property and the developing homes there factored into this report?
That's part of the, I think, the 638 additional homes that we're seeing in the next five-year trend. If you take a look at the proposed number of units, it's obviously significantly less than that. But again, one of the things we look at is, if you had a development that, let's say, had 700, 800 housing-type units, so multi-story housing, condominiums, we're just not seeing that in that black polygon. I mean, there might, someone will be saying, oh, I know those two developments, and there's all this residential building. Coincidentally, that was one of the questions that one of our board members asked us in another district, and we're actually able to do some further investigation, and out of there's 618 belly permits, I think 90 were for single-family homes, the rest was all for apartments and 55 and older target. I think, oh, that makes sense, you know? There's some anecdotal things that, you know, is going to always look at year-to-year, but I would say from a conservancy standpoint or a confidence level standpoint, we think the numbers are pretty accurate. And again, people are like, we've been losing for, well, yeah, if you take a look at the birth rate, and also it's level, and it's starting to uptick, well, naturally, if you capture 6 to 6.15%, you're going to stay level or go up. And again, the more houses that can get transitioned, we think the only, it's only going to be good news for Livonia relative to the people moving into the district, so. Yes?
Just one thing, you said, you talked about housing transitions. I don't see that exactly measured here moving forward. How do you measure that? And what do you, what do you predict? Is it based on age? Is it?
Yeah, there's actually three different factors. So one is the type of new housing product, and so if you take a look at the population increase or decrease, so the population, the number of housing units and the population don't match, which means people are just moving within the district, that's how we're able to track that transition. So we can't tell you what the age of the person is, but we know they're staying in that that black polygon, they're just choosing either a different type of housing unit. If we saw a significant increase in the number of families and a significant, or the same or level off of housing units, then you'd say then definitely people are transitioning out of the district, but you're actually in both upward trend, so that number of families has increased, the number of units is increasing, but at different rates. So that that tells us there are some people choosing to still live in Livonia. So kids are grown, you're going to get out of the four-bedroom, three-bath, two-story home, you're going to move into a one-story at grade or walk out. We're capturing that as part of the housing stock going forward.
And I just want to be clear, Paul, is that on page 26 of 320, in the anticipated non-historical factor of 1.89%?
That's correct.
So if you want to just flip back?
Tell me again what it is.
On page 26 of 320.
The big enrollment numbers that we were looking at.
What section?
It's in section four.
Section four.
It's the third page back, it was the eye chart that showed the last seven years' historical.
The cohort survival, so the one where we were looking at the numbers on the diagonal.
Yeah, on the upper right-hand side, you'll see the non-historical factor.
Yep. So we're on this sheet here with the shaded, the shaded diagonal.
Yeah, yep.
So the two numbers that make up the change from one year to the next are, one, that traditional, that historical trend on the left side of the big black line, so what have we typically done from one grade to the next grade? And then also that anticipated non-historical factor of 1.89%. So there's two numbers embedded into those projections moving from one grade to the next grade.
And then we asked about as part of that 1.89%.
So the, you know, when I, if I look back, and when we were looking at household holder data, that, if I recall, that that is a bit higher, higher age than some of our surrounding areas. Does that factor in already?
It is. That's why we're seeing more of a trend at the middle, upper middle school and high school level of actually capturing more than what you have in the previous years. But we're not seeing that in huge increase at the K level or entry to elementary.
Got it.
Although I, you know, sometimes go to community forums like, I'm 52, my kid, like, okay. We're talking median and average, you know, kind of a halfway point and then, you know, take everyone and divide it by the 90,000 individuals. So, that is factored in.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, you bet.
Can you explain the 1.89 percent factor into this again?
So, literally by grade and then we take a look at what's happening in the individual grade levels, we're able to actually create what we call the non-historical factor. So, basically, 1 to 2 percent is kind of that range. So, if we see something like, for instance, additional housing, you'll see a higher non-historical factor. If it's no transitional housing, population's dead level, this was probably like below 1 percent. So, what it does is it allows you to factor those algorithms, if you will, relative to the next seven years' projection, or five-year projection for those individual grades. But again, you're not at two or three, like, South Lyon is like 3.2. I mean, they're, Novi is similar, you know, they're, they built four, 500 homes on the western side of the district that kind of split Novi and South Lyon. What's interesting is people say, well, what does that mean? Well, there's still only 13,368 kids in West Wayne County. The question is, where are they going? And so, again, we're tracking those, both incoming kindergarten, but also what's happening kind of first grade through 12th grade going forward. So, and again, as we go through this and let's say the housing level starts to level off and population trend levels off, this historical factor actually will drop with that. If something is going where mass exits, for whatever reason, that number obviously goes up pretty significantly. But it allows that trend to really create that three-year moving trend going forward. So, yes.
When we look at the same chart, you mentioned that there's a big jump between going to middle school to high school, which could be the private school students coming, if their school doesn't have a high school, coming to Livonia for high school. But then through the high school, it drops. They're all in the 90s. And what could that be attributed to? Is that people going to private schools?
Actually, some of it's geared towards, I'll call it, the general education population. So, if you have, you know, your traditional ninth through 12th grader disciplinary reasons or moves out. But again, we're kind of shocked, I mean, when you look at the last, you know, five years, you know, you're around 90, 95 percent from the 11th grade to 12th grade. And so, I can't tell you why that number is dropping. I just say, here's the trend. And sometimes it's, you know, are we doing enough outreach programs for our sophomores, juniors, and seniors? Is it, but from a ninth or 12th general education, that is the downward trend that's been shown to us. So...
I would expect to see a little more stability there. That's very surprising.
And again, it fluctuates all over the map. I mean, if you take a look at the 2010-11 school year, just take 12th grade, for instance, you're at 95.58 percent, 96 percent. Two years ago, dropped down to 89.16 percent. So, again, these are some of those anecdotal things where you really have to dive into the details to say, did that many people just move out between 11th and 12th grade? Or is there other categorical changes that, listen over there, it's, you know, 150 kids, that's a lot of students to be. So, again, some of it's just diving into those details of...
And some of that, Liz, is some of the information that we're collecting a little differently this year than we have in past years because as we have the enrollment task force over the past couple of years, that was some of the trend that we saw at the 10th and 11th grade, which is a relatively unusual time to lose students. So, there were, you know, obviously some obvious explanations, some were, you know, alternative education programming options that students were choosing elsewhere because of a wide variety of reasons, credit recovery, some students who may, should have moved from being a sophomore to a junior, but did not have enough credit. So, therefore, that cohort, that student in that cohort doesn't move forward. But it really doesn't explain that total number. And so, one of the things that we are tracking a little bit differently is that information when we have our year-over-year to determine, there are, I think, 11 different categories that can be coded as to where those children have gone. So, whether or not they're still within our district, but maintained at the same grade level, whether or not they've needed alternate education programming, whether or not they've dropped out. Compulsory attendance is, you know, up until the law changed this year, it was still 16. And so, we have some different coding to know whether they stayed in district, out of district, chose educational options. So, we should have a better idea of that moving forward. Because that was some of the information that was perplexing to us last year as we took a look at some of these enrollment trends. Some, we're not surprised to see the growth at 7th grade and 9th grade. We're not entirely surprised to see some of the bump that we get at first grade, although it's a lot less than we used to now that we offer full-day kindergarten. So, there were some that were not surprising trends to us. That in particular was one that we felt we needed to, from the data we had, we weren't able to explain the significant number of those. And so, now we're tracking those exits in a little different way.
That's great. This is, it's startling.
Well, I do want to say though to that comment, after three years of fairly dramatic decreases in 12th grade, we, last year was a big rebound year, growing over 4 percent. So, I think what you were talking about with credit recovery and stuff does seem to be having an effect at least one year, as an example.
Yeah, and you see that capture rate going forward, especially at the 10th grade and then to some extent the 11th grade growing a bit from the historical pattern to the left of that black line.
So, again, part of our engagement was not just doing the district-wide enrollment, but if you turn to section five, the last tab...
We want to mention on that information that Paul showed you that we provided and it was by school by grade.
Absolutely.
So, we can put all this significant data together.
That's why I'd like to also thank you, Lisa Abby, for your staff's time.
It was just important to know that that was actually from, we did that six-year or seven-year trend for them. So, we keep all that. It was easy for us to provide it to them, actually.
So, again, part of our engagement is also take a look at it by school, individual schools. So, the first thing we do is really look at, what is that cohort? So, again, taking a look at how students transition from the elementary to the upper elementary and to the middle school and ultimately to the high school. That allows us to do that individual school boundary. So, the chart that you have on that first page shows the elementary schools, kind of the breakdown of the different areas relative to the upper elementary schools, middle schools, and ultimately to the high schools. Page after that, nice colorful map, looks like this. This is the individual school boundary. So, just like the overall district, we're actually able to give you a demographic profile for each individual school, district, building. So, for instance, we'll pick on Roosevelt here in a second. But again, taking a look at what's happening in that purple octagon and then transitioning to the chart. So, again, it looks just like the previous district-wide chart, but it has the highlighted yellows on it. Again, similar chart, the way it works, 2004 in the upper left, the number of births. And then, so that, for instance, this is Roosevelt Elementary, just kind of chosen at random. But again, this is without Detroit, a 0.49 percent capture rate of those live births. Someone goes, okay, how do I get to my total capture rate of 6 point? Well, this is how you get to it. And yet, you know, the number of elementary schools for Roosevelt in particular, 0.49. And then 2009, 2010 school year. So, again, you can see the trending from the kindergarten levels, again, this past year, that thick black line, there's only 52 incoming kindergarten students. And you can kind of see the cohort from first grade to second grade. So, a slight decrease from last year to this year to first grade. But there's a 1.3 percent increase at the second grade, a 7 percent increase from second to third, and then a 92 percent from, from third to fourth. But again, you're looking at a lot smaller numbers. So, when you go from 80 students to 75, it's not like you're losing 5 percent, it's just, okay. And so, again, smaller numbers, the percentage gets, but again, 334 total students. Again, taking a look at the, about a 0.4 or 5 percent capture rate based on the birth year, we think you're going to be right around that 320 to 330 for the next five years for Buchanan, or I'm sorry, for Roosevelt. So, again, taking a look at utilization, the floor plans, the maps, overlapping it with the buy billing, enrollment projections, we're able to then give you a next five-year projection and utilization for consideration. So, as I mentioned, there's actually three different methods. So, what you have is here, the first page is method one, that's the sixth year. The second page is a method two. So, again, the numbers, because there's such a dramatic decrease of the kindergarten from last year to this year, you see the method two may not be the most accurate. But if you just took a two-year trend, you're like, well, yeah, this is our trend. But based on an increase of live births, the same capture rate, we think method three is probably more realistic, which is the blend of the two. We're still pushing that 315 to 325 in terms of number of students at Roosevelt. And as I mentioned, you know, like I said, Super Ten O'Quess has the 320 pager. But behind that, there's even the purple map, which shows the boundary. And then the same breakdown you had by demographic, number of families, number of students, number of households. So, I won't go through it in detail, but it gives you an idea of, again, kind of the detail that we're providing to the district relative to each individual school within the district.
And that's what our committee will get. So, that's the difference in my binder versus yours. So, everything up until this point is the same. And then this breakdown that is detailed by school is provided for all of our, all of our different schools and our different facilities. And so, we wanted to be sure that our committee had all of that data at their fingertips. And yet, not as important for us tonight, because obviously Plant Ryan will come back as we've had a chance to work through the committee and present this information out and again, you know, for the benefit of the public and folks watching, to be able to do so with some charts and graphs may be a little bit easier than going through in this format. But we wanted you to understand what was going to be, what has been compiled, the complexity of what has been compiled and then what we'll be working on as a committee.
I'm looking at your feeder patterns and I'm a little confused. Everything's 100 percent and I don't think we have any schools that are that reliable in terms of where they feed to. Particularly Webster certainly doesn't have 100 percent going to Holmes unless I'm reading this incorrectly.
No, I think they, it's all, we don't split the schools. Everybody feeds, it's not 100 percent necessarily the number of students, but every student has the opportunity to go to that next school. Now, Webster, I can't speak to, but 100 percent of the Hoover kids all go to Riley.
Yeah, Liz, you're correct. So, that should be corrected with regard to the Webster piece. And that may have been simply because of geographic. So, we've had a chance to look through the majority of this, but we'll take a look at that one piece. For the most part, what this is intended is not that there are not intra-district school of choice transfers, because there are.
Certainly.
This is where the district has scheduled that school to send students up to the next feeder level. So, I would concur that in this case Webster...
Yeah, I think Webster and possibly even Foss should probably be reexamined.
And is Randolph in the wrong? Shouldn't Randolph be over Johnson?
Yeah, Randolph doesn't go to Riley and Holmes.
Yeah.
Sorry. Yeah, that's good.
That's why we're at draft.
That's right.
You're paying attention to it, I like it.
Hey, we're reading this.
That's good. And like I said, I know it's a lot of data. And again, there's a method and a methodology and a process that obviously, we thought it was important to come to the board tonight before we go to the committee saying, you know, here's the two preliminary findings. There's nothing that's out there that's like, oh, my gosh. But at the end of the day, it's allowing to then go to the committee and say, okay, here's some data points for your consideration. And, you know, again, kind of go from there and pull together what's important to the goals and objectives of the district relative to financial projections, bond funds, utilization, all that.
Right, because where students are actually going is in the utilization. So, that is captured. This is more the generic, what is our triad methodology?
Now, the enrollment numbers, they also, the lower elementary gates include the school of choice figures?
Yeah, so the head count is all students out of ten at school. So, it's either in district, school of choice, teachers, parent student, something, you know, it's the total number of...
Total students.
Correct. And sometimes, we talked about, you know, it doesn't make sense to do in district enrollment projection versus school of choice. From the utilization standpoint, we just say use head count because that's the number of the students. And I think Super Ten O'Quess is right, because you may have some students that are supposed to be going to a particular school, but the numbers aren't so to skew the utilization one way or another. If we said, oh, my gosh, there's 100 students at this elementary they're supposed to be over here, that would come out in the analysis and say, okay, well, maybe need to change the policy relative to inter-district. We have had a district most recently, they're looking at putting an addition on a school and so you have 67 students that are supposed to not be there. And a lot of it was just inter-district. And they were able to do it over a two-year period, but not have to spend three or four million dollars putting addition on the building. It's more of trying to plan it out to really look at it holistically. Like I said, the good thing is there's not huge outliers out there that says, oh, my gosh, it's, you know, we've got a major problem. It's, we have some opportunities to look at and I think having the committee will be very, very helpful.
Thank you.
So, with that, I'll throw back to President Burton.
All righty. Are there any other questions from anybody on board? Thank you very much.
It is a lot of data.
And it's, thank you very much for walking us through it all once. Just if nothing else, to explain, you know, where the percentages came from and how they relate to one another. Thank you very much for all the depths of work that's been done. And it'll be exciting to see the recommendations from the committee and the group coming forward.
So, light reading.
Yeah.
Let me just give you just a brief synopsis of next steps.
Go right ahead.
For the stakeholder group. And so, one of the things that certainly is a hallmark of the way we function in Livonia Public Schools is to be sure that we have the opportunity to hear from multiple stakeholders and we have the opportunity to have this information for us to study in depth. And so, Lisa Abby and Steve Archibald will be co-chairing the committee. Paul Wills will be facilitating the work. He has done this, as we talked about in the fall, in many, many districts. And he has the ability not only to delve into the data deeply, but also be able to have the benefit from having walked through this process in multiple districts and is able to pose some of those starting questions as the committee begins its work. We have put together, I would still have a couple, just a couple of finalizations folks are looking to hear back from. But we have an excellent cross-section of, we have someone from every school in the district, K-12, non-K-12 facilities. We have a number of teachers representing the committee, administrators, we have parents on the committee, two board members, community members, a building supervisor, a secretary, a paraprofessional. So, we really wanted to make sure, operations, transportation, we really wanted to make sure that we had not only all of the facets of our district covered. I think the most important piece for us, and I think Plant Ryan might be used to working with a little smaller group. One of the things that we wanted to be sure was there was the ability for a key communicator in each of our schools and departments to be able to come back and keep people informed along the way. And one of the things that we're looking to do really at the end of each meeting is summarize some key pieces of information that we would ask that those folks go back and share with their staff or their department along the way. One of the things that I think we've talked about from the very beginning is the importance of this process being very clear to our community, open to our staff. As I've visited with each staff, I've had the opportunity to visit about two-thirds of our staff at their staff meetings so far and have them scheduled in through May. And one of the things that I've shared is the importance of providing this information to folks as we have it. And so, for instance, we'll start with an opening PowerPoint with our group and our work. Those types of things will then be uploaded onto our website. And we'll be sure to get periodic information out to our community. Now, certainly part of doing work in that group is that you're able to explore many, many different options. So, you know, we may not, after each meeting, say, we talked about this idea and that idea and this idea and that idea. And that's part of the work of a group like that. But I think what we're, what we're really trying to emphasize is what kind of data do we have? What are the goals of this group? What is the purpose? And the ultimate purpose is to bring the recommendation back to district administration and to the Board of Education with regard to optimal facility use, to bring a summarized enrollment trend projection back up to the board for budget planning purposes and to really be able to serve in that role as good stewards of the resources with which we've been entrusted, our human resources, our financial resources, our bond resources. And so, we have an outstanding group put together, a couple more folks still to fill in. But we are excited to get started and we believe we have some really great thinkers in that room who we believe will be able to be very forthright and very open, and that's what we're looking for. We have, as you know, we have no preconceived notions about where this may take us. We also feel that, and I think we said this in December, we should never shy away from data. And so, we need to take a look at not only our enrollment data, but our facility use. And also, what are some of our ideas moving forward in the future with regard to programming and opportunities for our students? One of the things we pride ourselves in at Livonia Public Schools is, within very, very difficult and challenging budget times, that we have maintained exemplary opportunities for students pre-K through post-secondary. And so, we are looking to continue those pieces. We are, as Paul talked about, one of the things, one of the questions I often get, so I just want, I thought I'd share that, one of them publicly is, well, if an outside group, no offense, Plant Ryan and Cressa folks, if an outside group comes in and says, well, this school can house 900 kids and we should fill it up and put 35 to 40 kids in a classroom. And one of the things that we appreciated about the process that we worked through with Plant Ryan and Cressa is they ask things like, what are your numbers at kindergarten? What are the ratios you use at grades one through three, four through six, seven through eight, nine through 12? We utilized Livonia Public Schools information and data. And this process really is driven by Livonia Public Schools and facilitated by Plant Ryan and Cressa. So, just a couple of points I wanted to make sure that I shared with all of you. We are grateful to the folks working on the committee. And then the last piece is that I've gotten this question a lot, you may have gotten this question with regard to timeline. And so, many folks have said, is your work going to be done by the end of the school year? Are you going to have recommendations to the Board of Education for them to consider by June? Or if not, when? And one of the things that we realized when we saw the comprehensive nature of the data at which we needed to study and the unique nature of some of the programs that we have to offer in this district, we don't want to put an artificial timeline on this very important work. in this district, we don't want to put an artificial timeline on this very important work. If we feel that the work of the committee can get done by the end of the school year, so to speak, before our staff leaves for the summer, then we will certainly bring that information to you and bring recommendations for you to consider. If we don't, I truly believe that there is absolutely no harm with us moving into August and September with some of this work and perhaps not bringing final recommendations forward until that time. We may have information, the committee may charge us with going back and getting additional data or delving a little deeper into specific programs, schools, enrollment, et cetera. And so I know that initially we had talked about the possibility of bringing some information by the end of June. We may still do that. However, I've certainly shared with Ms. Abbey and Mr. Archibald that their work in leading this committee will have the option of continuing on into the start of the fall, certainly not prolonged. We're not going to go on for a year. We know it's important for our staff, for our parents, and for all of you that we are able to make some recommendations moving forward. But it's important that we get this right, not that we get it done. And so we take with great care and commitment this work. We're excited to take a deep look at the data surrounding our district. And we really feel like we have some outstanding information at our fingertips that will allow us to bring you some excellent recommendations moving forward.
Any other comments from the board? Mrs. Jarvis?
When I was looking over the list of people in the stakeholder group, you to be commended, it's you've covered everything. I just can't imagine a better group. And I'm looking forward to the input that they have.
Thank you. We've got some great hearts, some great minds, and we have folks that every single one of them thus far has either volunteered or said, yes, I would be happy to represent my school, my department, my constituency, and we're very grateful for that.
Any other comments?
One thing that I noticed near the beginning of your presentation was that you noted that LaVonia Public Schools continues to attract families. And I'm thrilled. We've been saying that for years. We've known that LaVonia has been a lighthouse district, but our entire state has gone through unprecedented years. And it's gratifying to see that even from an outside source coming in and taking a look, that they're validating that LaVonia Public Schools, even throughout the budgetary problems we've been having along with the rest of the state, continues to attract families. And I credit our staff, our administration, for buckling down, making tough cuts where we've had to, for other folks picking up the, you know, the work around them that's, you know, more like any other organization in the state, really. More work is being done by fewer people at this point. But it's being done, obviously, really, really well in LaVonia because we're still, throughout all of that, attracting families. And I'm thrilled. And I thank those staff members, those parent volunteers, everybody in this LPS community for making sure that that continues to happen.
Any other comments?
Thank you very much, Paul.
Nope. Thank you very much, Paul. Thank you, Ms. Abbey. The next item on our agenda this evening is item three, building insight. And our chair is Mr. Johnson. I'll turn the meeting over to you.
Thank you, President Burton. We have just a mere eight items tonight. And I won't go through the list. We'll just do them as we go through. And item 3A is bid results for move management services. And our presenter is Ms. Abbey.
Thank you very much. I can see that Mr. Paul Tario and Mr. Scott Smith are heating you on another binder. I can imagine your bookshelves in your offices and in your homes right now are full of these little binders. I have a lot myself.
Would the amount help to build onto my house?
Absolutely, absolutely. No.
Got to take a little trip to Ikea and get another book.
There we go. And we'll invite them to join us at the podium. But we did have an opportunity to quickly go through this list at our study session so you have kind of an understanding of what's coming forward to you this evening. We continue on with our bid results for our Phase Three work, or Summer 2016 Bond Work. We also have in the list a couple of, or one sinking fund, excuse me, two sinking fund projects as well as the bond projects. And then last but not least, we have Arch Environmental here, who will help us talk about stormwater management in just a second. So we will start with our bond issues. The first one we have is, first of all, these are all in your binder. The first one we have, we had two that were actually in your packet over the weekend. The bid results for move management and for technology move management. And I will let Scott go through the details, or I'm sorry, Steve. I'm going to call you the wrong name. Steve Smith, Scott Smith.
I answered the phone.
Yeah. Scott Smith. Remember, we used to have an employee here, Steve Smith, right? That's where that came from. Anyways, we'll have Scott get started on those, and then we'll get to the rest of the awards. Thank you.
Thank you. This is really kind of our, probably the, I call it the cleanup of the awards for this year. They're all important, but it's a lot smaller group this time. And once we get through these recommendations, it should get us well underway for next summer. Probably the only real new proposal in here is for the move management. And it's tabs A and B in your binders. It's broken down into two categories, one being the move management, and that's going to be your furniture and your teacher materials and stuff. Technology movement, move management would be things like the computers that we need to pull out to facilitate the construction and also get moved back in. So section A is the move management. The vendor that we're recommending this year is Corrigan Moving. They were the low bidder, and we're recommending them at, it's really seven schools this year because we have to do part two of Franklin this year. Last year when we came to you, we only moved the materials we really needed to, to deal with that portion of the construction. We've also got Stevenson, and this is really a total move. And the bulk of the move at Stevenson this year will happen this summer, with less expected the following summer and a little bit throughout the year.
So we won't see another one because it'll be for both years?
We shouldn't, yeah. If we do, it'll be small things that were unexpected, and we'll use contingency funds to accommodate for those. So again, we've really bid it as three projects. We looked at it from the elementary level, the upperals and middle schools and the high schools. In this case, the low bidder was low on all three schools, and that's Corrigan Moving Systems. Corrigan was involved last year doing the technology piece, and they were also involved in year one doing some of the moves there as well. For the technology piece, that was Premier Moving, and you may remember that.
I'm sorry, I have a question in reference to this.
Yes.
The differences in the pricing between all the vendors is kind of a large variance?
It is.
Any explanation or there weren't any alts or any differences? Everything was bid per spot at that figure?
Yeah, we had a very, I'll say, long and very thorough walk-through with all of these vendors that went into the early evenings, one of the days that school was out. And each of the vendors that submitted a bid did walk the facilities with us. We pointed at things, looked at things, scratched things. A lot of people, a lot of the vendors, when they saw the tabs, were surprised at the variance in results as well. I will say that these folks that did bid it are people that, they're big players in the industry. They're regular names for us. They're guys that bid it the years before. We did conduct post-bid interviews with the low two, just because specifically for that reason, to make sure that things weren't missing. We met, you know, we looked eye to eye with the low guy and said, hey, you got it? All those things, and he confirmed it. He's already reached out to me, he's anxious. So, yeah, it was a surprise to a lot of people, too, especially companies that are established like they are. That was a comment I got back from a lot of those folks.
And Corrigan has done it, so they should, I mean, have a good understanding of what they're getting into.
Yeah, yep. They've done a lot of moves. A lot of these guys do.
That's what I mean. Yeah, so I mean, it's.
Yep, and they saw it firsthand and.
Seen an elementary closet.
Yeah. So, yes.
Okay, so you're confident. I mean, I'm glad we're saving money. So, I mean, that's the bottom line on that, but it just was a big difference, so.
Go ahead. You said to come up.
Just one thing to add, you know, the moving window for all the school projects in the state is very small, right?
Right.
If you want to move the same weekend. So a lot of this has to do with how their schedules look, if they already have a couple of big projects on the books, their numbers go way, way up. If they don't have any work on the books, their number's pretty cheap. So I think that has a lot to do with it. Corrigan did do, although elementary is the first year, and they did a great job.
So they're familiar with what, how we operate and what we do, too. So they know what to expect.
Yep.
All right, great, thank you.
And I know he's staying away from other school districts that have programs this summer, too, in anticipation of this. It's going to take, you know, a lot of folks to move all these schools out in that one three, four, five-day window, and then move them back in again. So he's well aware of that, and his commitment is to the district.
All right, great.
From the technology piece, that one we're recommending to, I guess in total, for the move management, we're making a recommendation of approximately 284,000, 236,000 and change, which is direct contract for Corrigan Moving Systems. For the tech piece, that we're making a recommendation to Premier Relocations. And you may remember them from last year, they actually did the move management piece last year, did a good job there. So actually, it's the roles are reversed this year. And the commonality, too, is for the technology piece, they always hire some folks that are actually technology inclined, and that vendor will be the same as from last year, too. And they, again, things went very well. They know the system here. We expect it to go smoothly there as well.
Just a quick note, you may recall the first year we didn't have a separate technology movers. And we found that it worked much more smoothly last year when we did. And so we're pleased with that, and really it brought our issues down to very, very minimal. And so it really, we're glad to have folks not only who are familiar with our expectations, but have been in our schools, and also to really have two, whether it was two separate vendors and the same vendor, but two processes that were separate, one specific to technology and then the rest of the movie.
So those are two items that we would like to enter the agenda on regular.
Any other, any questions?
So actually, I'm sorry.
No, that's quite all right. I was just going to, on item C, we put these two together just because these are part of the overall elementary Phase Three awards. And you'll recall that we talked about on Grant, the low bidder that we had previously recommended to the board and withdrawn their bids, so we're bringing you the second low bidder or most responsible bidder. And on Randolph, in addition to paint, we've been spending, we don't have to talk about that anymore. We spent a tremendous amount of time working with French and coming up with a good solution to lockers in that building. For any of you who have been in that building, you'll know those corridors are a little odd. And so this is a little bit late just for that reason. We really did, we really weren't going to do lockers there. And frankly, we were persuaded that they needed them as much as the rest of our other schools did, and we really challenged French to come up with a solution, and they did. So we're bringing that recommendation tonight as well.
And they were the only school that did not have lockers at the K-4 level. And so these are new. The others, we did our renovations, you know, with the lockers in place, might have added a bank or two here or there, but for the most part, so this is the only school that did not have them. So we will be.
The other good news on that front is that by redesigning it, talking through or coming up with a better plan, we were able to save significant dollars from what the original was, so.
Remind me again, the painting, why it's so far over budget? Was that one of the schools we had some challenging conditions?
Randolph was.
Randolph was, not Grant though.
We tried to learn our lesson on all the painting projects. Scott can probably talk better than I can, because he's been to all the painting meetings. But we are looking at prepping things differently and doing some extra work upfront to make sure the painted here is better.
Okay.
Yeah, and what you're looking at in tonight is for everything. So this is the total award for the elementaries for the summer, which incorporate these two, the Grant repainting bid and the Randolph lock.
That's right.
So again, what we'll propose, we'll break out those numbers on the motion like we always do, so the increase amount and then the total amount that the board is approving for those summer projects.
Great, thank you.
Yes, really, in total, for the elementary levels, the recommendation tonight is really just under $50,000. It's the price difference between the two painters and then also the locker bids, and a small adjustment in contingencies to accommodate, because that's a percentage-based calculation. So again, this really rounds out the elementary schools. So at the end of the day, that total for both, all three schools is just under $10 million for Grant Hoover and Randolph. And this would complete all the recommendations for the summer.
Regular on April 18th.
Sorry, just one other question while we're on paint. The, we've had some issues with feeling at other schools. Is it to the extent that we may have to go back and relook at those schools, or what is it, how, what's the scale like?
We actually, since you mentioned it, we do have a meeting next week with the Facilities Department.
Okay.
And we've had them go back and look at all the buildings, because we had a two-year warranty on the first 2014 Phase One projects that we did. And that's coming up, you know, this fall, it'll expire. So we asked the district to go back and look at all the buildings, holistically, mechanical systems, electrical systems, paint. We're actually going to meet next week and go over that, and so.
Perfect.
If there's a problem, we'll find it.
Okay, thank you.
And the maintenance guys will definitely let us know about it.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Oh, yeah.
Absolutely.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Scott, are we on tab?
That was tab C, actually. So that was at the elementary level.
Right, so now we're on tab five?
Tab D, which is, can I jump over to Stevenson? And if you'll recall, you know, there was a short window, we wanted to get a lot of these critical awards done last time for Stevenson. And so we presented those to you, and there were three contractors that just didn't make it into the batch, they were less critical, their materials were more readily available. We deferred them until this, to this board meeting. And so we're here tonight to present those to you. The three categories would be paint, testing and balancing, and the signage categories. So the total award recommendation, tab A, or, sorry, tab one, D1, this recommendation is for $312,600. And really what that is, that's those three categories, the bulk of which is the painter. Again, he was the second bid, the low responsive bidder, same with signage. And then also our testing and balancing company, Air Solutions. That brings the total recommendation in D2 for Stevenson, and this would be final, $18,764,854 with a contingency. In fact, that contingency we left alone from last award, we didn't adjust it by the 7%. We felt that was sufficient. Tab four is going to be the cost summary, the items highlighted in yellow, or orange, I should say, P. Those would be the new awards for this term. And then tab five will have the bid tabulations for the respective bid categories.
These were, I think, if I remember correctly, all low-baiting specifications for all of these awards for, excuse me.
They were. They were the low-responsive bids. In two cases, they were the second bidder, but they were the low-responsive bid.
Okay, any questions?
So as with any of these, if the board members have any questions between now and voting, please don't hesitate to email, email me and Lisa, and we'll certainly get the questions to Plant Moran. If there are any specific items with which you'd like additional information, please don't hesitate to let us know.
I'm going to put that in the regular.
Regular as well.
And Mrs. Ofis, if anyone does send a question your way or to Ms. Abbey, if you could respond back to the entire board so everyone has all the same information?
Of course, will do.
Thank you.
So I'll just introduce this item. This middle school is actually, as you know, one of our summer projects for coming up. And we haven't done much work yet, so it's a little surprising to see a change order quite so early in the process. So I just wanted to explain that really this was an item that we had originally looked at as an alternate with the Holmes project. And I'll let Scott or Paul talk about the details, but this is a mechanical equipment, and I think it's in your package. Did we put the little map in? But anyways, there are several rooms around the LNC, so it's three computer labs and a couple of. labs and a couple of instructional classrooms. And we really, number one, as you know, our budgets were a little stressed this year, and also, we really haven't done a lot of work in other schools in those media center, or in those labs outside of the media centers. So, when we originally brought the award bid to you, we didn't make that recommendation to upgrade the HVAC system in those rooms. And then, so therefore, we didn't do the ceiling and lights and some of the other things that would come along with doing the mechanical equipment. I think we had some basic upgrades in there, but not the, not the whole thing. So, when we, our facilities people came back to us, Harry and Wayne, as well as the architect, and then even more specifically, the principal of that school, who really made us, and I think it's the three people at the table here, and the architect, aware of the fact that we have had continuous problems with the, with the system in those rooms. I mean, pretty much, it is past end of life on that mechanical system. So, we went back, took a second look at it, and said, no, this makes sense. We're out here. We've already bid the mechanical. We've already bid all this work. So, this allows us to do this, you know, not separately a year from now, but while everybody's out there, while we've got bid prices. So, it just made much more sense to bring that to you now, ahead of time while we can still order the equipment and get it done this summer. And because, of course, this will be over our $100,000 limit that we've set up as our policy for when we make a change order. Above that, we need to bring that to the Board of Education for, make a recommendation and ask for your formal approval. So, I'll let Scott talk a little bit about the detail with the numbers and what we're buying with this additional change order, and then we can have further discussion or questions.
Thank you. Probably the best place to start, and it did not print well, but if you go into the last page of that, in area C where you see some crosshatching, that's the media center there.
So, we're in tab 3.
Tab 3, yep. E3. If you look just to the, below that, you'll see three computer labs. And again, it's small, but there are three computer labs, and then to the right of them is a classroom, and then turning back up, another classroom and another room called a science prep. Those are the, those are the six rooms that are part of this, this change order. And so, what the change order involves is, as Ms. Abby said, is the mechanical systems, completely replacing them, replacing, we have to pull new power for all that stuff. We have, this would be replacing the lighting, the fire alarm, ceiling work. And we have to do a little bit of casework adjustment, too. We'll be using a unit ventilator system similar to what we have in the classrooms. And we'll be putting that in those rooms here.
One of the reasons we decided to use unit ventilators is because we had pre-priced them out the first year, so we know we're not gonna get stuck with a bad cost on those. So, thankfully, we had that already nailed down.
And just to note, we have Stephanie Hantje from Barton Mallow as well, who I think was part of helping us put this, this information together. We appreciate certainly their, their continued involvement in this. And I think one of the, one of the pieces of feedback, as Ms. Abby mentioned, was the feedback from our own folks who have been out there multiple times with multiple repairs. To continue to do that, moving forward, we may be able to eke by for a year or two. But as we've learned, once we have ceilings exposed and we're in there and we're doing the work, the efficiencies of getting this work done is important. We have taken very little, if any, other alternates for many of our, for many of our schools. Lots of projects on our would like to do list, but this really moved from would like to do to really should do for long-term efficiency, so.
So, the reason we're bringing it here today, too, is the mechanical pieces carry along lead item, you know, provided it meets your approval. We'd like to get going with that, get those submittals rolling, get the material ordered so that we can do it, you know, flawlessly and in sync with the rest of the work that we're doing this summer in that, in that school.
Any questions?
You mentioned this is end-of-life kind of situation. Do we know how old this equipment is? I mean, I'm implying, I'm hearing that it's, it's just aged out, not that it's a bad piece of equipment that's not functioning properly.
I believe it's original to the building, isn't it? Harry, is that original to the building?
Yes.
So, 40 years.
Forty, yep. Okie doke. That's what I suspected.
You got your money.
Okie doke, thank you.
Yeah, we're spending, the district's spending a lot of time servicing these things continuously.
You can't get parts anymore.
Yeah, it's not money well spent at this point.
Okay, thank you.
Duck tape.
The rules are D.
It's not a newer unit that's not functioning.
Any other questions? All right, that'll be out for regular as well.
That, we're the bond discussions for this evening.
We're down to Central Office.
We are, thank you very much. We mentioned in our study session last week that-
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Have a good evening. Oh, they're not leaving. They're gonna, they might be available to discuss paving projects. They have to put on their second, other sinking fund hat in a moment, so, from their bond hat. And actually, both, Harry, our Administrator of Operations, and Plant Moran have been helpful in putting together this plan for the back, as we talked about in our study session last time. We obviously do need to make some repairs or move forward with some decisions. As you know, it's already in spring, and we have spent a considerable amount of time looking at what our options are as it relates to that. We had an opportunity to talk to that at the study session. I think I got some information back out to the Board of Education in our packet relative to that. We did put out a bid packet to do some repairs on the roofing, so that will help long-term with any water infiltration problems, especially on the chimney area. And then, we also put out a package to replace the windows and do some repair work at that. And again, as I've said before, we're not buying 40 years with the repair work that we're doing out there, but we're probably buying 15 or 20 years with the repair work that we're doing out there. And more, most importantly, we are making those spaces safe for our staff to be working in. So, we would recommend that we move forward. We did put out a bid. As we discussed, we had two vendors respond. One vendor only responded to one of the packages, and one, and one vendor responded to both packages, both the roofing and the windows. We are recommending that we go forward with the one vendor, Butcher and Butcher, at $117,405. We do believe this is the most responsible bid response. As I mentioned, the other vendor was about $50, $55 lower on his one package, but that would mean we would split up the job to two different vendors. And while sometimes that's okay, on a small project like this, it just makes much more sense for us to engage with one outfit, one trade in order to get, or, excuse me, one vendor to get both trades done. So, we would recommend that we go forward with this, and that we move quickly and hopefully get tape out and windows up. So, I'd be happy to answer any questions with that.
Questions?
And I know we had a chance to talk about it a couple of times.
I did, but I think Mrs. Burton got her hand up first.
Frequently, if we only have one bidder, or we're one responsible bidder, we may try to go out again, unless we feel that the price is fair and they're competent to do the work. Do we feel that this is a fair price for this work to be done?
We do. Here, we've spent a considerable amount talking about it, and we're very pleased with the vendor. I know Harry's met with them and talked with them, so we are confident.
Okay, that's it, thank you.
Mrs. McGowan.
Similar question, I guess. It just, is there any feedback from other companies why they didn't bid, or did you send bid notices out, or?
Well, we do bid for Michigan.
Right.
You know, we always do bid for Michigan, and we put that out for 14 days, as we always do. So, I think it's just a very small job.
Yeah.
And there's a lot of work out there, as we know.
That's true. Very much.
There's a lot of work, so.
Important task, but not a, a sort of big-ticket item out there in the construction world.
It's like having a dollar project versus a hundred or something.
Right, you got it.
Yeah, I understand.
I did do a mandatory walk-through. There were eight vendors at the walk-through, only two responded.
Really?
Okay.
Wow.
So, for the benefit of the public, I want to repeat that, because that doesn't get caught on camera. So, our Administrator of Operations, Mr. Lau, indicated that he did do a walkthrough prior to review what would need to be done and what was part of the bid package. There were eight vendors that were part of the walkthrough, and only two chose to move forward with the bid on the project.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
Two packages.
I do have a question, but in terms of timing, how soon would they get started? How long is it gonna take?
You can come join.
Oh, why did I say anything?
The submittals are coming in already, so they are poised for the approval. I'm thinking it's the, most of the time, it's like a four to six-week lead time for the windows in particular. The roofing package would be expedient probably within a couple of weeks.
Okay, so, we're talking late spring, early summer?
By the end of May, we should see some progress.
Okay, good.
We were really trying to hit before we hit that hot weather again, which we're, which is when we had the problems with the windows expanding and contracting, and the lentils not holding up, so.
Okay, great, thanks, Greg.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
You can stay for paving if you want, Harry.
I'm so excited.
That would go on for regular as well.
Thank you.
I just want to note that that's sinking fund, that is not bond fund. Sinking fund, not bond fund.
All right, then we'll move to 3G pavement replacements.
We are handing out the bid results for the paving. As you know, I put that in your packet, that we just opened these last week, and we're hoping that they'd be really straightforward, and we'd be able to bring them to you this evening. And Plant Moran did look at them. We talked about it last week, and we did feel like these are, these are pretty straightforward. Not every bid we bring you is very perfectly straightforward, but these were. So, we are looking at doing some paving replacement at Hayes, Kennedy, and Riley, and this would be a sinking fund project. And as you know, when we look at these paving projects, we're doing them after we've done the construction work. For pretty obvious reasons, we're not doing that in the same summer that we're doing the construction work due to equipment and usage, et cetera, et cetera. So, we really, they, you know, this is really, let's take a step back. This is part of the work that we asked Plant Moran to help us with in terms of the sinking fund, both in terms of helping us assess what our needs are and what our priorities are, and also then putting those packages together for us and helping us do the bidding, going through the pre-bid, post-bid, as they would, just as on those bond issues that we talked about a few minutes ago. So, they have, as well as our operations department, because priorities, you know, in these kinds of issues actually usually start with, sometimes the school, sometimes operations, operations department, but we work together. So, our facilities department, working with Plant Moran, working with our building administrators, we did determine that these were our priority items for this summer in terms of paving. So, with that, I will let Scott talk about the actual bid and bid results.
Sure, thank you again. As Ms. Abby said, these would be at Hayes, Kennedy, and Riley. And if you recall from last year, we did something very similar at Frost and also at Coolidge, and we replaced portions of the lot. And these would be repairs that we could be doing, we could do expeditiously. These are things that, you know, don't require, we're not rearranging the lot. We're really fixing troubled areas and putting the lot back and getting it in good repair again. At Hayes, the scope of work would involve the front lot there, and also the bus loop, where we're seeing a lot of deterioration, particularly where the buses make the turns around the corners. At Kennedy, the bulk of the work is in that front lot as well. And then, at Riley, it's really at the back lot. That's in really poor repair. So, it's where the teachers park and also where they make deliveries. We've got some, some repairs in there where we can, we're gonna use a GeoBlock. So, it's an impervious pavement of sorts. We're gonna use it on some of the radiuses where the bus drivers tend to cut corners, and after a while, it just doesn't look so good. This will help stabilize the area, but still allow that area to drain. It won't change any of the drainage calculations and such that permitting agencies would want to be privy to. So, we're moving forward it, because we can, it's something we can jump on, and something that can be done this year without having to go through a formal and elongated approval process. And that's why these projects were chosen for this year, coupled with the fact that we just completed the construction, so we wouldn't be impeding any progress during the summer on those schools either.
I'd just ask a clarifying question. So, at Hayes, you indicated it would be in the front of the school, and then the bus loop is actually located on the north and adjacent to Ann Arbor Trail. So, that area is being done as well?
Correct.
Okay.
Let me look at the bid tabulation.
Yeah. What you'll see is, and this was a mandatory, at the back page is our bid tab, and this was a mandatory walkthrough as well. So, we had, I believe we had four bidders at the walkthrough, as I recall, and three that ended up submitting proposals. But as you'll see, the bids were really very competitive, very tight. And similar to the move management, we, we looked at each project separately, you know, with the intention of possibly making a separate award at each school, depending on how the bids came out. Best asphalt, we're recommending for all three schools, and really, because, one, he's the low bidder at these three schools. He offered a combined bid savings that, during his bid proposal, and that makes him the low bidder. We've interviewed him with ourselves, Livonia Public Schools, NTH Consultants, who did all the design work for it. Felt very comfortable with them. They did some of the work last year, performed admirably. Lot of comfort level with them. They can meet the schedule this summer. The projects will probably be staggered a little bit. They'll, they'll, they'll start one, probably jump, it's different operations, you know, the milling, they'll take out the asphalt, jump to the next one. But the process should go pretty quickly, and it'll all be complete by the end of the summer, in time, plenty of time for school to resume this year. You know, we're coordinating activities at the schools, making sure that this work doesn't impact anything that's scheduled there. We did accept one alternate, which is at Hayes, and that was really to, the original bid, we're only replacing a portion of that loop at the north side of Hayes, and we were going to seal coat and crack fill some of the areas that were holding up generally well, but needed some attention. We took an alternate to kind of mill that top surface down where we were gonna crack fill and repave it. And we got some very aggressive pricing for that, and thought it would be a good thing to take advantage of. The other alternate we did do was over at Franklin, and the scope of work was gonna be over by the, really by the football field where the asphalt's in poor repair. We chose not to do that for a couple of reasons. One being, you know, we think there's some more due diligence we can do there. The second reason is, we don't want to interfere with what's going on there this summer. It's gonna be a busy summer over there. They'll be putting in the balance of the parking areas, which actually are in that direction. Just a lot of traffic. There's a lot of activities that go on there. We thought maybe it'd be best to revisit that next summer, possibly change the scope. But as you can tell, we've got an order of magnitude of the improvements there, and that may change a little bit depending on what happens this summer. But we were all, that was all discussed, and we were very comfortable with, with pushing that into next summer, despite the fact that we know that there's, it needs some attention in the years coming.
Any questions?
Can you just describe what a GeoBlock is?
A GeoBlock is really, it almost looks like a piece of lattice, but it has some structural stability to it.
Okay.
So, it's kind of weaves, goes like this, and allows grass to grow up through it.
Oh, okay.
Set on some aggregate base, much like a pavement would be.
Yeah.
Some gravel, in other words.
Okay.
It's just maybe an inch and a half, two-inch profile. It'll take some time. You'll see it, and then eventually, the grass will grow through it and become less noticeable.
We currently use GeoBlock at Stevenson behind the football field, the drive that comes from the, from the parking lot back to behind the football field. You see the grass grows through it. It gives a stabilization, as Scott said, but it also leaves a substrate where it drains through, so it doesn't cause us any problems with Wayne County and their permitting for stormwater. So, it's a dual.
Oh, this way just right into stormwater. That was a great segue.
So, it's, it's a, it's a good piece of construction that keeps it natural.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Seeing none, we'll put this on regular as well.
Also sinking fun.
Also sinking.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
And our segue into-
Now, we can say thank you and have a good evening to Plant Moran.
We can say thank you and have a good evening to Plant Moran.
Usual.
And move on to our next item, which is stormwater management plan discussion. I did have an opportunity to give you a nice, long memo about this topic, as we invite our guest to the table to sit down. The representatives from Arch Environmental, you'll recall that we are using Arch Environmental for much of our environmental and abatement work- Environmental for much of our environmental and abatement work across the district.
Thank you.
Um, they have also come on board about a year ago, is that or so?
Yes.
To help us, um, specifically with the MDEQ stormwater management plan and program that we have in the district. Um, we started this several years ago, you may recall, um, the, the state of Michigan, they're gonna do all the detail, I'm just doing very broad, but the state of Michigan requires that we have a permit to get rid of our stormwater, and then in order to get this permit, which we have to renew every five years, we have to have a very comprehensive plan. I don't know if you had an opportunity to take a quick look on the district's website at all, just to get a glimpse at some of the things that the state of Michigan asks us to do in order to be compliant, um, with stormwater management, um, which I'm going to ask them to discuss in just a deep, in just a second, but, um, it's very comprehensive. We do follow all of the rules. You may have seen lately, as you go around the buildings, you see we've got sign-ups about how to, uh, handle water, what to do if there's spills. Um, we are working with our schools to get some programs into our schools relative to that, and then of course, we have a lot of information on the website, we have our operations department being trained or have been trained multiple times on different ways, whether it's how they dispose of paint, how do they store our salt for, uh, the, for the wintertime, and all those kinds of things. So, again, it's very comprehensive and, um, Arch i- is one of the companies in the state of Michigan that does, works with DEQ and has an excellent reputation in helping districts maintain and be compliant with all the requirements. So they're gonna talk about the details, and then we'll talk about what I put in your packet, which is the re- a resolution that we will ask the Board of Education if, if they feel good about it, once we go through all this, to adopt that. And the gist of it basically is that the Board agrees that we should support the MDEQ's requirement for and follow the policies and the plan that we've put together. So with that, uh, let me first inter- Oh, Scott is here. Uh, this is Scott Sager, he's the CEO.
He's stuck with us since the beginning.
No, thank you for staying, of, uh, Arch Environmental, and Jenna Sendra, who is the manager of Clean Water. Like, like, that's a great title, manager of Clean Water, so. And everyone knows Harry Lau, our administrator of operations. So with that, Jenna, am I gonna turn it over to you?
Great.
Okay, thank you.
Um, thank you for having me here today. Um, she introduced about the, the permit, um, application, which was due this year on April 1st, 2016. Um, one of the things, um, that the DEQ did, um, following the last permit that was revoked, was to kind of change up how they wanted the permit application done. I'm kinda giving you a copy of the permit application. One of the things that you have to do is develop a, um, a stormwater management plan that answers every single one of these questions in the permit. Um, the DEQ will then, um, review this plan and decide if it's, uh, meets all the objectives in the permit. Um, I have, since before this year, um, I've had the opportunity to do, um, put in five permits for schools to the DEQ and gone through many rounds of revisions and questions. So, um, I feel very confident in a lot of the, um, items that I've put, I've developed this specifically for schools, 'cause if you read the permit, it's not necessarily meant for school districts, it's meant for municipalities and townships, um, and, um, it's, it's, um, it's harder for schools to, to meet the permit items because of, because you're a school. Um, so we've developed a program that we work with Harry Lau, um, that is things, the things with you are already doing, so that you don't have to change too much of, of your operations to meet the program. So, um, the Board let resolution specifically, um, I've highlighted two pages in the permit. One of the items that the DEQ asked in this permit is that an ordinance be developed. Now, since you're a school district, you can't do an ordinance. So, um, the Board resolution has come up, um, and been able to meet those obligations. I can't just say it doesn't apply to school districts, we have to have something in place to meet those specific ordinances. Um, so this particular, um, Board resolution is one that we've developed for schools for this particular permit, um, and I have to say that with the Board resolution, you're not saying you're going to do any more than you've already committed to by developing the plan and putting in a permit. It just gives some sort of backing, I think, to say that you will, um, do these items, which essentially, when you sign a permit application, you've already done that. So I won't, don't want you to feel like it's, um, obligating you to any more items than you've already done with the permit application. Um, and I'm happy to answer any questions about the permit particular or the stormwater management plan.
So that's the plan?
This is the plan that we've submitted. Um, I will, we will be getting a copy on the website shortly. Um, this is, will not be the final plan, it's, um, it will, there will likely be revisions just because the DEQ has to do something. So they always find revisions, so every time it's revised, we'll just put the new plan up on, on the webpage, and, um, it'll just be pieces and parts that they might want you to tweak. Um, but overall, I think it's, it's something, it's built on things that you're already implemented, and there's nothing particularly extremely new that you have to do. Um, a few items over the years, just to kind of meet all the new demands of the new permit, which, um, they've very, they've done it, the DEQ has created this so that they can essentially get everything in that was revoked in the last permit, but you're creating it yourself. So they, it was a very interesting way that they did it this year. So, they just kind of flipped it, so we were saying what they wanted instead of the permit saying what, um, they wanted, essentially. So, does anyone have any questions in particular? Yes?
I do, thank you. Um, I guess, so this is a renewal that we're going through?
Correct.
Okay.
Um, every five years, you do have to renew, um, and you have to have a permit to discharge stormwater, or you have to hold all your stormwater somehow, which is nearly impossible.
Right. So, okay.
We'll build the water tower, right?
Right, right.
Would you take us through the resolution?
Is that bondable?
I'm sorry, you'll take us through the resolution?
Yes, the resolution.
I think Dan had a question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I just wanted to say, you did say there are some, some changes that, over the next few years, that we will, will adapt. Are any of those, um, cost, uh, extensive as far as cost go?
The way, um, I have it worked out, uh, Harry and I discussed, is, is with this permit, instead of having everything, they need an inventory of every single basin, um, catch basin, stormwater structure in your district.
Okay.
Um, essentially, we don't have a complete updated one. Um, so I have placed in the plan that you are going to be doing that over the next three years, so that it can be spread out and you don't have to incur a huge cost alongside of it. They are the ones that are requiring very specific maps detailing the whole combination of how the structures can, you know, um, interact with each other and in case of a spill, or, um, and to make it easy to do dry weather screening for the next round, which was, um, I don't know, it looked probably a little harder just not knowing where every single one is. We might even be able to eliminate some, some, um, outfalls as well, once we do our inspection, which is, which is nice, so.
Okay, great.
Saves costs later, the more accurate your information is.
Great.
So.
Do you have to do the painting?
No, that's not actually required by any law there.
It is, it is not required for every basin, no, and, you know, it can be a public participation activity that hopefully, you know, someone gets, a teacher can get involved to do a couple of basins here or there. It, you know, never hurts, but it is not required.
A major part of this permit is public education, uh, you know, teaching children about how the waters go through the storm drains into the creeks, rivers, lakes, and how we need to keep it clean as possible. That's why we're seeing a lot more detention ponds, retention ponds, so that the solid particulate can fall out before the water's out.
What's nice about our, our particular program, or I should say Jenna's been working on this for many years, um, is that, having done this in many other school districts, we were very familiar with programs that are already in place. So, of course, Livonia Public Schools is unique, but there are a lot of other programs saying South Lion Schools or Birmingham Schools, so we know that you might have something similar, uh, and we can actually use that, uh, use those tools right in to our permit. Um, if there is a nice thing about having to spend money on an environmental regulation is that you actually do get, uh, the students and the staff involved in this permit, where, like Harry was saying, we could have students actually painting the fish on the drains. Or, uh, there might be already a club, or, uh, say, just an environmental club that's at the high school, and some of the programs that they already have in place might be used in this plan. Or we might take some, uh, programs that were really successful in other school districts and, um, give that information to your staff. It's kind of fun for us, 'cause we do a lot of other ugly unfun things. Hazardous waste and asbestos and that, and so, so this is kind of the, the one environmental reg where we get to, you know, interact with, with actually your, your community, your students, so. That, yeah, you have to spend money, but at least there is some good coming out of that environmentally as well.
Any questions? I have one, Jenna.
Yes.
The, the two areas that you have highlighted-
Yes.
That talked about ordinance or other regulatory mechanisms.
Yes.
I'm assuming that the resolution that we're proposing will meet this category-
Correct.
-of other regulatory mechanisms.
Correct, that's what, um, the resolution will do. It, it basically states that you will, um, agrees to eliminate illicit discharges, follow the post-construction rules, um, implement the plan, um, and it will take care of all those ordinances, um, and questions, which is great. And it, it means, it's one, one ordinance, one, I'm sorry, one piece of paper for multiple areas of the permit, which is-
You're the benefactor too of other districts where we've done this in, and they do accept that.
That's what I was gonna ask.
Yes, we have the same, we have the same one in, basically, every single district that we've done a permit application for since 2013, has started with this Board resolution.
Right.
Yes, so you will not be the only one.
I just wanna know who came up with SWMP, SWAP.
Sure, I know, I know, and you know, there's so many, like SWMP, SVPVs, there's so many different parts.
It's SWAP?
Yes.
How appropriate.
And this, in this resolution, um, I've already, I've already played, put the plan in for application, um, and in here, it stated that we are looking at the Board resolution and it will be approved in some point in 2016. Um, so that's, you know, I gave it time, so you didn't have to rush and, and look at it and sign it right away without having any questions answered.
Okay. That's always a good-
I know, right? Um, does anyone have any other questions specifically about the Board resolution? Of course, if you have any questions on any particular line item in here, please, you know, let me know and I can let, I can let you know why it's been in there.
I think the big picture is, is, you know, Harry's had an opportunity to read it and go through it, and I've had an opportunity to read it, and these are things we're doing. So it's not adding, I, you know, I know you said that and saying it again, you know, it's not adding to, to our, what we're doing. We, we do want to, uh, work more with our schools to see what opportunities we have to get students and staff involved, uh, you know, certainly that's a big push for MDEQ and has been for quite a while, and, uh, actually, if you get a chance to look at that website a little bit, you, you really do actually get a little interested in the process as you think about, especially in today's time, about thinking about clean water, so, uh, we do think it's certainly an important issue. While we, we don't love mandates, we do like, you know, this one is-
Particularly unfunded.
Right. You know, and with, particularly with our website, we've added some, we have added some additions to the website, and, um, if you look at that, we have a blog that we maintain, um, that you have a link to, which is a lot of how we meet a lot of these public education items. So we've done a lot of it through the website in particular, and, um, through this blog where we put posts and try to hopefully get teachers on, and, um, I use this documentation for your, um, progress report and for any audits, because it is per, per permit timeframe, you're going to have one audit. So you've had an audit for the last one, um, the idea is that there'll be another audit with the new permit at some point, so.
At some point in the five years?
Correct, that's what, that's what they're supposed to be doing. Um, we'll see, which, you know, you've had your, your one, and, and Andrew, oh, I actually have worked with and spoke with, I have a very good, um, relationship with him, um, a lot, many of the DEQ, even the woman who wrote the permit, um, I've had a lot of discussions with them. So, I am well-liked and, um, it's always better to be, always better to be in good with the DEQ than not, so I try to help out a lot. I'm able to get schools into, you know, certain things just because, um, I have a good rapport with all of the DEQ members, so.
We do a lot, we, we mostly deal with environmental compliance, so we deal with a lot of different environmental type of regs. This is the only regulation that I know of, that they actually have a person at the DEQ that's assigned to this permit, that is assigned to the local public schools.
Yes.
That's not like that in any other environmental regulation, so, they looked through this, and we wouldn't be wasting your time with a resolution if we knew that they would just look over it and, but it, it won't get passed unless we have this resolution. So, it's quite unique in that factor.
Yes, it's been, this permit application round has been very interesting, just because they are really behind and dragging their feet and really reviewing a lot of things. And actually, Kristy, who is the MDEQ, um, the woman who runs that section and wrote the permit, um, when she had a, um, they had a kind of a help session for school districts, and they used our examples of our, uh, Waverly one that we completed and had passed, so, um, which is good.
That's good.
Yeah.
I do wanna say that when I was at Timothys Camp in 2009, we brought the student board in there also, and, uh, so it's, it's an easy thing to get through.
Yep.
I did have one question, is this something all school districts have to go through?
Uh, districts that are in urbanized areas. Um, so if you're in an urbanized area, um, then yes, they have to have a permit.
Wow.
Some sort of, be either on a permit or be nested, which is not an opportunity for Livonia, just because of how many areas that you're in, so.
Yeah, it's kinda crazy, you get outside of, uh, urbanized areas and they don't have to do that.
Right.
Just down as many pipes up in the ground.
Yeah, maybe, yeah.
Great. Just wanted to say a quick thank you, Arch Enviro- Environmental is also the group who took care of all of our water testing, uh, from our levels.
Thank you.
So just wanted to share just a quick acknowledgement and thank you, um, to them for their very thorough but, um, rapid work. They knew, time, the timeline was important to us and we had a well-timed snow day.
Yes, we did.
So they were able to get, uh, what do you call that, first, uh-
First straw.
What is first flush? I was gonna say first.
Yes, first, it's first straw, which is the complication of doing many, many schools, um, especially in a district this large, it is definitely a little bit-
So being able to go through our schools while they were closed and do that helped expedite that, um, but they did a, a very thorough job.
We appreciate the snow day.
Hundred, yeah. Anytime.
That's great.
About a hundred fifty-page report, and as you know, um, that feedback came back very positive. Just wanted to acknowledge Arch Environmental and that work.
Thank you.
Very good.
Thank you so much for coming here. You're welcome.
And then the regular as well.
Regular Jenna.
And President Burton, in the words of Mr. Rulie, I was very grieved.
Yeah, uh-huh.
But that concludes building, sorry.
Alrighty, thank you. The next item is on our agenda is going to be item number four, finance. I would like to note that four C is being omitted from tonight's agenda, we will be covering items, uh, A and B. And I will turn it over to Mrs. Jarvis, uh, Chair of the Finance Committee.
Thank you, President Burton. Uh, tonight, we have two brief items.
We've heard that before.
Yeah, and the first is, uh, the 2016-17 budget discussion with Ms. Lisa Abby.
Thank you very much. Um, as you know, we are in the process of preparing our 2016-17 budget. We have had several discussions already and several iterations on the budget, so, um, we had talked about, um, as we go through the process of spring, bringing information as we learn about it and bring it to the Board of Education and update our, um, our proposals and, um, our forecasts for the 16-17 budget as we continue to work on, um, getting it finalized. You'll know, of course, the legislator, legislative body was not in session last week, so there's really nothing new legislatively to bring to you. Um, so, when we talk about the budget, um, we'll talk about some of the forecasts that you're very familiar with already. But what, the first thing that I just sent around to you is, um, projected enrollment with revised assumptions, and that's going to make sense, obviously, after the discussion that we just had with Plant Moran Cressa and those binders that you have in front of Plant Maran Cressa and those binders that you have in front of you with those new enrollment projections. So I just wanted to go through that with you and tell you what we've done to adjust the budget based on that. So we've had a little bit more time than you have with those enrollment projections and have had an opportunity to really spend some time making them prove it to us, I'll put it that way. That's my, my, my very synced way of saying that, but we've spent a lot of time going through their formulas, going through their assumptions, you know, double-checking the historical data and, and really, you know, digging into that data so that we felt comfortable that they had everything they need to make those projections. I know they know what they're doing. I just want to make sure they had everything from us that they needed, understood us, understood Levonia, understood our programs. Why, a little bit I was telling you, I wanted to see those, some of those programs, I want to call it below the K-12 line, so that we could say, when you do your trends, these trends make sense because they're, they're consistent in those first six or seven years on the left side of that black line, so that when you move those numbers forward and make assumptions based on all that other data that, that they had, that it makes sense. So.
And I think you gave a great example of that with Nijiiro.
Right.
So you saw a 50% growth last year. To have those numbers included in our kindergarten count would skew that information.
Right.
And so I would say, Ms. Abby and I, I believe have met four times since we received this, just on the enrollment section.
Right.
Because it, it certainly did not follow the pattern that we had anticipated moving forward, and we really wanted to, to push back a bit on, on those, on the capture rate, on the non-historical factor, you know, from where those numbers were gleaned.
Flybursts.
You know, really everything, because it did not necessarily follow, again, the pattern that we had anticipated as we move forward. So certainly didn't want to look a gift horse in the mouth, because there was some positive news there, but we, we want to be cautious. And I think, President Burton, you were getting to some of that with your question that said, does that accuracy hold true the very first year?
Right.
You're working with a district. And certainly, as, as we move forward and continue to tweak and update those enrollment projections, I think we'll have an even greater level of confidence. But that's a little bit of, of why we'd like to make the proposals we are this evening with regard to planning enrollment for next year and not simply using that, that base number, so.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
So what you've got in front of you, just to go through the numbers and we can talk about where we made our assumptions. So on the top, you see what we had originally brought to the Board of Education was change in demographics or the enrollment shift we've seen for many, many years at a reduction of 300 students, or about almost $2.5 million. And then we had originally proposed school of choice of 125 students for about $1 million of additional revenue. So that's what we've been talking about up until today in, with these changes. So the, the rest of this is revised, and there's two main areas, the change in demographics, which is the enrollment issue, and then the school of choice. So I'll do the change in demographics first. So if you look at that enrollment study, when you get a chance to look at it in a little deeper number, what you see from the current school to, to next year is actually a change in that K-12 program, so I'm not talking about shared time or anything else, was 14 students, a reduction of 14. So I had 300 enrollment decline, they have 14 enrollment decline. Big, very big difference. So what we talked about was, and you, and you heard Mr. Will say tonight, that they could be a percent off. So even though a percent isn't very much on 13,600 kids, which is what that number was, that's 136 kids. So I'm adjusting that enrollment decline of 14 by 136 to account for, it's their first year, they could be a percent off. Maybe they won't be. That would be very good news in the fall. The other adjustment, I did a half a percent, and this is more along the lines of the below-the-line numbers. So as we think about some of the programs where we don't have as much control over, like shared time numbers, what will Catholic, Catholic schools closing do to that, some of the other programs, how many ECP kids are we going to get, there are other general, other numbers below that line that affect our general fund that we don't have as much of, of, as much notice on. We do our typical enrollment trends, but just for conservant, conservatism, you know, first year out, we did another half a percent, so that's 68 FTEs, so.
And those are some of the variables that Mr. Will's talked about as well.
Correct.
When he talked about other competition that you may or may not know, surrounding districts offering programs or opportunities for out-of-district students, really, it's, it's difficult to quantify that from year to year in the educational market in which we reside, and so.
Because it's changed so much. It's not like we have a history of neighboring schools with school of choice or a history of some of the programs, so.
Sure, sure. So while we want to certainly have confidence and do have confidence in the projections, in a district our size, a percent is a significant number. And it, we believe it's most prudent to bring to you a recommendation that is revised from the 300, because certainly we didn't commission this study to, to negate it. However, we, we want to put it in context, and we certainly don't want to put ourselves in a poor position budget-wise or moving forward in any other way by, you know, by projections that are perhaps, you know, too positive.
Okay, and that piece?
It's good to me. Okay, and then on the school of choice, the second, the second part of our enrollment, the board had originally approved 125. We had some discussion about adding the kindergarten and eighth grade at those slightly higher numbers, so that would be an additional 18 above what the Board of Education had originally approved, which gets us to 143. And then, again, as you know, we had a significant discussion about the fact that we have had some open enrollment where we actually didn't, the word tonight is capture, but we didn't actually see, realize 100% of the enrollment of those school of choice numbers that we had. So we've used 90% as an estimate. We hope that we'll get 90% of that 143 that we've approved and asked for and approved, which would be 129 students. So we look at those two numbers where, again, it was a negative 2.5 and a positive 1 million, now it's a negative 1.8. That's a $674,000 change, and then a slight change on the enrollment, school of choice enrollment. Altogether, we're looking at a positive or increased revenue budget of $703,000. So my budget projections that I'll give you shortly will show that revenue differential. So that's good news. Even being fairly conservative or pretty conservative with our enrollment estimates for next year.
So your thoughts on that? Are you comfortable, are you comfortable with that? We certainly felt the need to adjust the, the 300. We also wanted to accurately reflect what we've seen historically with regard to the rate of students actually registering, enrolling, registering and showing up with regard to the school of choice population. And so we, we'd like to get this as accurate as possible and reflect those changes, but we really wanted to go into a little bit of detail with you so that you didn't just see a changed number from 300 to 218 moving forward, so.
Questions, comments? President Burton?
Regarding the 90%, is that what we've seen historically over the last few years? I mean, I've, I've seen it in numbers and I haven't really just translated it into percentage.
Yeah, it's, it's a little bit more.
I know it's always a little under.
It's a little bit more positive. It was, it was higher than that the first year, but it was significantly lower than that the second year. But again, we feel like the, the breadth over which the number of grade levels that students are registering, the number of families, and that we were able to capture all of them and let them know early.
Yes.
Rather than waiting, will, will help increase that. So again, you know, and Mr. Will's just talked about that two-year, the two-year data point, that second methodology, that it's, it's not always that accurate. So we really are only going on two years' worth of data. We do think with some of the variables, including the early notification this year, that that should be able to help us with that capture rate.
Okay.
Yeah. After the third year, we should have a pretty good idea.
Okay.
Yeah.
All righty.
Dan, had you had?
I was just going to ask what the fund balance would look like. But you anticipated my, my every need, thank you.
So I changed this up a little.
Oh, I'm sorry. I just firstly, I, I'm thrilled that we're already using the data.
Yeah.
And I'm also amused that the decline exactly matches his 14 people, 14 student decline. Ooh.
That's scary.
So at our last study session, there was some discussion about how we presented this information to the Board of Education, so I've changed it a little bit, so I'm, I certainly would like some input or feedback on that, but let me go through this slowly because it is a little bit different. So first of all, in columns B, C, and D, our forecast is consistent. Right now, we, we are feeling strongly that the $60 will hold at least. We are hoping and asking and talking about more, but we're feeling good about the $60 because that's really been in all three proposals. As we discussed last time, we don't think the 50-50 blended is going to go anywhere, even though that was a nice number for Levonia. We're really hearing strongly that's just not going to go. They, they are trying to find another way to get some money out, that's why we might see the foundation allowance go up a little bit or some, something else, but right now that isn't going to work. We are still hoping, we still have $100,000 in this budget for an 85-15 or 75-25 split or something that moves the needle a little bit to help the declining enrollment districts, but I, I, we just don't see that 50-50. There are just too many people on the other side of that that are affected adversely, so as much as it would be nice for us, we, we do have to understand that if we were growing by 500 kids next year, we would feel differently about it, so. So those budget assumptions for those three columns have not changed, and therefore the revenues and the expenditures in all three of those columns are exactly the same. But what we have shown are what the budgets and fund balance would look like if, depending on the target that we put together as administration and the Board of Education for next year. So you'll see in the first shaded area, it shows a budget target in column B, zero budget reductions. In other words, if we do nothing and all of our assumptions come true, so we do no budget cuts, no revenue enhancements, just all of the projections that we've already talked about, the assumptions that we've already made, we would have a deficit next year of a little over $2.2 million and a fund balance of, I'm going to use the lower number, the state number, of 1.5%. Okay, so that would be going backwards for us. We're a little over 2, almost 3% this year, so that would be going backwards. If, column C, if we have a budget target of 2.5 million, so you can see then on the cost of budget target lines, 2.5 million, so I want to put that right up front, that would get us to actually a surplus of $260,000, so pretty much a break-even budget for next year. And even fund balance of almost $4.4 million, which gets us, moves us, moves the needle on the fund balance. We're at 3.0, almost 3.6%, not hitting a 5% target, but state target, not our target, but state target. But it does move the needle and it does move us in the right direction of, of a balanced budget. And then column D, which was one of the requests we had last time, was what would it take to get to a 5% fund balance? So with the forecast that we have right now, we would need to make 4.2 million, $4,260,000 of revenue enhancement, cost containment, budget reduction items. That would get us to a $2 million surplus, a $6 million fund balance, and that would be a 5%, meeting the state's requirements. 5% of revenue. Fund balance as, stated as a percentage of revenue. So what, you know, we've talked about here and what we can continue to talk about is what do we want that target to look like? What do we want that fund balance to look like? And what do we have to do to meet those targets? So again, all of the budget assumptions on the bottom half of this, where it says budget assumptions April 11th, so the only thing that has changed are the two numbers under revenue. So what I just showed you on the enrollment decline, so that's now $1,794,600, and the enrollment additions for school of choice is at $1,029,600. So all of the other assumptions that we've talked about, about staffing, about utilities, about retirements, retirement rate, none of that has changed from the last time we talked. So this shows that if, for example, column C, sort of the midway, what we've been talking about is about 2.5 million in, in budget targets, would get us to a positive fund balance and move the needle again up a little bit from where we are today. So one more piece of paper, and then we can have lots of discussion on this. But so what we've been working on is what those budget targets look like, and then how are we going to get to those budget targets? So again, assuming that we want to get to a 2.5 million target, and that's certainly just a target, a number on the paper, we can say 3 million, we can say 1.5. I mean, you saw if we did nothing, we would still have a positive fund balance, so, so that's good news. So on the, not that we would recommend that necessarily, but that just, you know, this is a little bit different year for us. So on the budget targets, we have 2.5 million. These are some that we've talked about, some of these things, and so I just wanted to highlight them for you. Again, a one-time use of funds, if we do decide to go forward with another sale of property, it could be, as we've talked about, the Clay property, it could be another property, we could certainly look at that. The, continue to utilize some of the fund balance in our special education center program. There's about $1 million in that program right now. We're recommending that we use about half of that. And then the 2015-16, which is the current school year, of course, I'm anticipating that this year's fund balance, so that $4.1 million number that you see here will be better by about 3/4 of a million dollars. It'll probably be a million. It could be a million and a half, but I feel very comfortable saying that we will have 3/4 of a million dollars more, just based on what we know about, as I mentioned in that amendment that we just had, that it's, it's looking better than we thought, and it's definitely looking better than we thought in terms of utilities and some of those tax refunds that we thought those two areas would come in better, and that's where we're looking right now, so.
And so that will come in our third budget amendment.
Right.
We'll have a final amount. So we would not be bringing these numbers forward to you unless we were pretty confident. We are not, these are still conservative numbers. But what, what we wanted to show you is how we propose initially getting toward that $2.5 million while maintaining as much of our program and opportunities for students as possible, and then, you know, remaining with that, that final target still of $750,000, again, which may be impacted by an even better-than-expected fund balance or other pieces, or there may be additional costs that come in that, that we don't expect.
Right.
And so those are the types of variables. It, it really does seem probably not an exaggeration to say about every week, there is, there is another variable that comes into that. So some of the good variables have been the Wayne County RISA, the one-time payment. You know, sometimes we get additional feedback on some of our benefits or other costs, and so, again, one of the reasons why we want to keep bringing this forward to you and updating this every time and talking about what those differences are is so that we understand that that process is fluid along the way, but we want to continue to get these numbers out there and have an idea of the types of targets that, that we're looking at moving forward. Certainly a little better picture than we had anticipated a couple of months ago, which is, which is positive, but we know that we still certainly have some work to do and a lot of assumptions built in that would need to, to come forward and, you know, in a positive way. So opened any questions and specifically feedback on the format of this? So we changed this a little bit previously. We had brought to you three different potential revenue scenarios. Again, just as recently as Friday, we had another extended conversation with some of our state representatives and the folks in Lansing, and I think what we're bringing you is what we feel is, has the greatest likelihood to move forward and that the variables actually exist in other areas. So rather than having six or seven different scenarios for you to study, we felt that those variables with regard to the revenue, we felt pretty confident on that piece, although we certainly have not given up on advocating for a higher number as far as that $60 per pupil allowance. Every $10 for us is about $140,000, so it's not a super significant number, but I'll tell you, we feel like any, any movement in a positive direction. So for instance, you know, $20 additional per pupil would be a little over a quarter of a million dollars. And so those are the types of things that we're taking a look at, especially when we saw the blended count at the 50-50 rate pretty quickly decline as a viable option. So for declining enrollment districts, especially like ours, when we're on the low end of the 2X formula, that we, we certainly are advocating for that per pupil number to rise. But we felt that it was more important that you saw some of the variables. One of the things, again, that the board had asked for was, what would it look like if we hit that state budget target? Generally, I mean, hitting that overnight or the, you know, from one year to the next is, is probably not entirely likely, nor would be the first scenario where we would use all fund balance or, you know, a good portion of fund balance and have no budget targets. So we think we're probably likely in column C, but, you know, as Ms. Abby can attest, those numbers get modified regularly, but I, I think it's helpful that we're bringing this forward just about every week or just about every time that we meet, so we're really, we really won't have any surprises moving forward. We'll, we'll have as clear a picture as we can have.
TV?
Um, so I have, I love the fact that we are talking a lot more positively than we have in the past. We've had some really good information come in. However, that concerns me because I think that there are many, many cuts that we've made over the past years where we need to play some catch-up. made over the past years where we need to play some catch-up. And I think one of my concerns is, is that when people start seeing six-figure, six-digit figures, they get a little crazy. And, you know, I start getting a little bit big and, you know, we're going to start spending money here, spending money there. I don't know if this is, is appropriate or doable, but, you know, we talked about having 16-year-old textbooks. So, and we've talked about needing to meet our 5% fund balance. So, you know, if perhaps we come to a position where we see that while things are going really great, we maybe have a couple of hundred thousand dollars that, you know, either, you know, we don't have to build up, or maybe we find a little bit of money that we can play with, that we have some set expectations about where that money needs to go. And I think, you know, increasing the fund balance is one of those things that we have to keep in mind, and I, I think this new format, you know, helps to exemplify that. But I, I think that there's some things out there that we need that are, I feel like we're going to start sending the wrong message to the state of Michigan, because if we start, you know, increasing our fund bend, then they're going to be like, well, you guys have plenty of money. And, you know, we don't know what the problem is, so we're not going to give you another $10 or $20 next year because y'all are, got your, everything under control. And my concern is, is that we have some really deficient areas that we need to make sure that we're not, I don't want to say forgetting about, but we've been so crazy about cut, 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 that, you know, we need to be very cognizant of those areas where we do need to spend a little bit more money if we have it, and where it's appropriate. And that, you know, if, if it comes to moving a program or buying textbooks, or if we need to move a program to buy textbooks, I'm going to move the program, which is going to make parents angry, but I can't provide 16-year-old textbooks to my students. It's, it's, it's beyond acceptable, or unacceptable. So I think that's one of my, that's, do you understand where my concern is?
Yeah.
You know, I think when we start seeing positive balances, people start seeing all kinds of areas where we can start spending money, and we have to be very cognizant of the fact that we've cut back way more than we should have cut back, and we need to start kind of clawing back in some of these areas where, where we've cut. Just because we come to a place where we're balancing the budget doesn't mean that we're spending enough money on what we should be to educate our kids.
Yeah, I think you make some really great points, Mrs. Bonnefield, and I think if I, if I reiterate maybe some of the things you're saying is maybe where have we, where have those cuts been most adversely impactful to our students?
Yeah.
And to our programs? And if we had some priorities for being able to restore some of that funding, what would those be? Maybe the board would like to take a look at some summarizing and some of that. Just so that you know, the information regarding, for instance, the specific example of our textbooks.
Sorry, I-
No, no, we actually shared that on Friday with some of our representatives, because we feel it's important that they have a picture of things that directly impact our students. So there have been significant impacts over time, whether you're talking about, you know, wage stagnation, as we've certainly heard about, whether you're talking about age of textbooks and materials and resources available to students and to staff to be able to adequately teach our students. That, the, the list of support with regard to academic interventions and support for students has been significantly impacted. So we have, there is no doubt that that impact is felt regularly in all of those areas. And I, I do think we need to continue to be cognizant that even with, it's such a balance, because certainly some of this is very positive news. We also have to realize that within these, we are constantly taking a look at what our one-time revenue sources and what are, what are ongoing revenue sources. Therefore, when you look at that, are we looking at one-time expenditures or are we looking at bearing legacy costs? And so I think those are the other things, when you, when you take a look at any of those pieces, if you are moving forward with additional expenditures that are legacy costs based on one-time revenue, that certainly is not a wise way to move forward. However, there are times when you have one-time revenue sources that you may be able to move forward in a meaningful way to hit a priority area with a one-time expenditure. If you're able to save in some budget reduction, a, a legacy cost moving forward, then you may be able to look at legacy expenditures, or, yes, legacy expenditures as, as we go forward. So it, it, we always have to be cognizant to move back into where are those revenue sources and where are those costs? What are here just for this year? What are coming out? And of course, Ms. Abby always has that delineated. Sometimes to clarify that for the, the greater community is, is a little more difficult.
Sure.
Does that make, make sense?
Yeah, absolutely.
But we can certainly put some dollar amounts and summarize what some of those most impactful cuts have been, where we would look at restoring some of those pieces. And again, the few things that I mentioned are all extraordinarily important. They have all had an impact. They've had an impact on our staff, on our students. And yet, within that, you know, as, as evidenced by, you know, some of the projections we're seeing, Livonia Public Schools is still an outstanding place to educate our children each and every day. So I think it's a line that the leaders before us, both in administration and at this board table, have worked very hard to maintain. We certainly are desirous of continuing that.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments?
Yes.
Question for you.
Our, thank you. Our unexpected money that came from RISA this year that was one-time funds. I know that we have expressed both thanks to those that we, that, who are having an impact on that at RISA, and I know that they are aware that we would love to see that happen again next year.
Yes, they are aware of it.
I figured that we had had that chat with them. Several, several of the "we," lots of us have had it. What are we hearing back at this point as far as the likelihood of that happening? And again, that's not going to be an annual thing, but it happened once this year. What's the likelihood of us seeing that next year?
I think it's probably good. I don't know if it'll look exactly like it did this year. What I understand is that, as you know, we bring our Act 18 budget to the county for review and approval every year. They are waiting to get all of those in from all of the districts so that they have a good handle on what they anticipate expenditures for next year to be. I know, I've heard both. Ours actually came in a little bit lower than, than the prior year. I've heard some districts are a little bit higher, so I don't know how that's going to balance out. I do know that they anticipate having another year where they would be adding to their fund balance this, this current fiscal year, so, you know, so the number that we got was actually based on last year, it was based on 14-15 final, final fund balance. So they're anticipating another good year this year. Now, if they find out their budgets are horrible and they're, you know, going to have a drastic year next year, they wouldn't want to use as much of that.
Right.
But we're waiting to hear and, yes, we're-
We're cautiously optimistic.
Yes, we are cautiously optimistic.
And strongly encouraging.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm. Let us all do that.
Haven't felt comfortable enough to put it down yet, but you'll be the first to know.
And we would certainly add that to this, you know, to this final sheet as something to consider. We came close to that, but we just think we need to, to wait for, for better confirmation.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions?
We're just thinking along the same lines, so many of the things, really, I mean, that, you know, that we're talking about on a regular basis.
That's actually reassuring.
Yeah, it is.
Any other questions or comments regarding the budget proposal?
I just, I just kind of want to echo what you said and Mrs. Burden said, or, sorry, Mrs. Bonnefield said. And it shows, you know, this is not a windfall, obviously, but it shows how damaging declining enrollment is, that even if you stay somewhat flat, that all of a sudden, you know, the, we're not talking cuts that are just so painful and so drastic. It is, assuming everything in here is fairly accurate, which they said it is, this is the best news I think we, I've received since I've been on the board. This is very exciting, so. I'm really looking forward to, you know, building the district instead of, you know, taking pieces apart, so I look forward to the, hopefully, years ahead doing that.
We sure do, too.
Yeah.
We sure do, too.
Can I ask one more question? So, let me think of it. So back to the building, or the demographics, when I hear him talk about those numbers, we talk about historical data, and those numbers, they're historical data, they are, they are what they are, so those are actual numbers. And the projected data is based on algorithms and all kinds of, so when I'm listening to that, to me, whether it's year one or year five, there's pretty solid input that you put into it. Now, he talked about the anecdotal, you know, the, the one-offs, that they build a development and then you find out that it's for seniors, or you find out that they're geared toward first-time home buyers. That makes a difference in what the numbers are, and those individually, over time, are going to, you know, change the, the way that those look, and eventually they become historical numbers and then they, they go into the, you know, calculations. My question is, is there anything in particular, being the first year, that concerns you that their numbers aren't going to be pretty close to spot-on?
Are we just-
In the enrollment or your back to utilization?
No, the, the enrollment number. So the, the number that we're using in our budget, I'm going back to, they're saying we're going to lose 14 kids and, and I'm not saying that we shouldn't be super conservative.
Right.
I'm not asking you to change those numbers. I just, I'm, I'm wondering, it just seems like there's a, a level of concern being that it's the first year. Is it just, we're just really trying to be super conservative, or is there something different about the first year of numbers that is going to change in the second or third year?
No, if I understand your question, my, is, for me, it's strictly conservative. I mean, clearly, they were, clear with us that 99% is a really, really good number, and I agree, but it's 136 kids, 1% variance. So that's a big budget number.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, we, you know, 1% of, anything sounds small unless it's 1% of a big number. So, and, and as it relates to budget, you know, and it's the first year. If, you know, this was our fourth year and they've been coming in at 98.5%, I'd be budgeting 98.5% of whatever their number was. Or probably if it's our second or third year, I would have that level.
Okay.
I think that, given that we have, I get that the trajectory has changed so drastically from what we have been experiencing. I mean, you saw the historical data, that's real numbers. So that, that has changed. I believe in, in their data, I believe in their process. I mean, what we said was we have really spent a considerable amount of time-
Pushing back on-
Pushing back on those numbers.
Yeah.
And, and understanding that this is what they do and they, you know, I don't think it's bravado to say we're coming in five kids off, three kids off. I mean, you know, not at small districts, you know, so.
Yeah.
Especially Utica, you know, I mean, to, to be at that sort of number with a district versus Utica.
I think the whole, I think that maybe a little bit of, when you say 90, you are saying the 1% now that you say the 9, they say they're saying that they're 90%, 99%, that, that's clicking a little better.
Yeah. I, I do trust the process.
Yeah.
If that's part of your question, I definitely trust the process.
I just didn't know if there was something about, because we've talked about, well, it's first year, well, it's first year, well, it's first year. I didn't know if there was something in particular about it being the first year that, that was going to, you know, that we felt that there was going to be dramatic shift, but the whole 1% is 136 kids.
Right.
Now it makes a lot of sense.
We were just surprised to see such a relatively consistent historical pattern-
Yeah.
-that really shifted really from one year to the next.
Yeah.
And we had not been hearing that-
Yeah.
-along the way, even from some of our previous enrollment projections. And so, again, you saw the capture rate from Wayne County was not out of the realm of possibility. They didn't take the highest, they didn't take the lowest, you know, they took the average of the, the prior three years. Those are all those, those data points, the things that we really needed to see-
Yeah.
-stripped out and, and, and shown to us, because we just have not heard that that, that this was the year-
Or experience.
-where that transition was going to take place.
Yeah.
And so I think that was the thing that, you know, that does give us pause. And quite frankly, for the first year, I, I think it's prudent. I would much rather, you know, come forward on you in-
I'm all about being conservative.
-in October and say, boy, oh, boy.
Right.
They were right, and Lisa and I were way too conservative.
No, I would much rather go on that side, too, but it was just-
Yeah, it's a great question. We, we think, we think we've explored about every avenue.
Certainly that, that was, okay.
Yeah, I really, I really, I'm really enjoyed their presentation and a lot of really great information.
Yeah, how about all the demographic information about the city, about our community?
Crazy stuff, yeah.
Really. And this data is, to me, invaluable. I, I think, again, data that our district would not have been able to pull together in this way, so.
Yeah.
Very, very worthwhile study.
The, the building by building and, yeah.
Well, it's only worth what we do with it.
Yeah, you're right, Liz. That's the next step. That's the big step.
Any other questions or comments?
So nothing for the budget for the agenda for next time, so.
All right, then we'll move on to item B, which is the lease extension for the city of Livonia.
Thank you very much. Again, we had an opportunity to have some discussion in our study session last time. This is an ongoing lease with the city of Livonia. We actually own the Livonia Stilmosky Park, I think also commonly known as Veterans Park. And we have been, since 2000, leasing that back to the city of Livonia, so they maintain that as a city park. They keep it up and, and take care of it. There is no monetary exchange for that. However, we do have the privilege of having it maintained and continued use as a park in Livonia. So that has been going on since 2000, and that was part of the exchange for the property at where the rec center is now. So what we are recommending is a simple extension of the lease agreement for five years, which has been what we have done since 2000. We've brought that to you every five years. You last approved it in 2011.
Any questions?
Do you guys want this on the regular or the consent?
Regular.
Regular.
Yep.
Thank you very much.
That was clear.
Okay.
And Madam President, that is the Finance Committee report.
Thank you very much. That brings us to item five, Policy Committee, and I will turn it over to Mrs. Bonnefield, who's chair of policy for us.
Thank you. We have only four today, and Mr. Archibald-
The policy chair can say that.
And Mrs. Scott, everyone could delight us with their expertise.
Good evening, everyone.
Hello there.
Good to see everybody. We save the best for near the last.
Yes.
Yep.
Appreciate that. First, we'll talk about Board Policy JBA, and actually, we'll talk about Board Policy JBA and JBB sort of simultaneously. You may remember that on March 7th, we brought Board Policy JBB, which was entry age, to committee the whole meeting. And while you'd agreed to move forward with the changes we had suggested, following that meeting, we realized that there was another Board Policy, which was Board Policy JBA, which had to do with the compulsory attendance ages, and it made sense to us to blend those two policies together. So essentially, that's what we're bringing to you tonight. At the, and I'll, I'll go through it briefly, and Mrs. Scott can fill in if she would where I, where I miss or omit, but when we're all done, what we're going to be asking is that Board Policy JBA, the compulsory attendance ages, be revised and, and go on the agenda, and then that Board Policy JBB be eliminated, and both of those things would need your approval. Okay? Again, just looking at what you have in front of you, Board Policy JBA, the change that we're suggesting there reflects the change in the compulsory attendance age, which is from six to 16 to- from six to 16, to, to, from six to 18. And so that's reflected in the changes that's indicated in what you have in red. You'll see about partway down through your page where it says, References May 2, 380.1561, that's lined through. Everything below that, it comes from Board Policy, from JBB, so, and you've seen all of that before, so if you want, I'd be happy to go through that, and Mrs. Scott can walk through those dates, but you've, you've seen that previously.
And that part of it just basically is the gradual phase-in, and so it's just updating to go along with the revised school code, Act of 451.
The next page that you have in front of you is Board Policy, JBB, and that is the one that we're, once we make all these changes, suggesting, recommending that we eliminate. Administrative Procedure, JBB 3, which is the next page, that also has been added to Board Policy, JBA, so basically those three have, have all come into one, and so that can be eliminated as well. And again, as an administrative procedure, that would be just for informational purposes. Administrative Procedures, JBB 2, which has to do with compulsory attendance ages, we have revised that, there was just one change there, and again, this was brought to you at the committee of the whole meeting in October. No, that's not right, March, October just felt way too long ago, in March. Not that March doesn't feel that long ago, but, so in March, and so that was updated, and again, that will become Administrative Procedure, JBA. Next is an Exhibit, and this was the letter to potential homeschool parents, and this will become Exhibit, JBA 1, and you've seen all these changes before and revisions. And then lastly, and this would, is new, adding Exhibit, JBA 2, which is the kindergarten early entry request. If you have any other comments on that.
That's, as is stated in, towards the top, says if a child is not five years old by September 1st, but will be five years of age, not later than December 1st, then they can complete an early entry request and submit that to the principal.
Do you guys have any questions on either of those? Remember that we only vote on the policy that we've been provided, the administrative procedures, it is a courtesy, so that we know and understand and can be cognizant of that, but are not voting on those items, only the policy. Mrs. Burton, did you have a question?
Related to what you were just saying, did we not recently decide also that we're also going to be taking a formal vote to omit a policy?
Yes.
So that we have a record of it happening?
Yep, and so that's-
Is that what you referred to, Mr. Archibald, when you said we just going to need our approval?
Correct.
Yep, and to, to omit JBB.
Yep.
And these are, we're, this is first reading for these, right?
Correct.
Okay. So we've got JBA and JBB on for first reading at the next meeting, and any other questions on that? Okay, then we'll move on to-
Just a quick note, so as you mentioned with the administrative procedures and the exhibits, although they don't require formal board approval, because they're predicated on the changes in policy, we will not upload those onto the website until, until the board policies have been changed, just for simplicity and clarity. Otherwise, we're going to have exhibits that refer back to policies that have not yet been changed.
Good point.
So.
All right, and to JD.
Thank you. This is really just a cleanup. Board Policy, JD, has to do with student discipline, and you may recall, back in January of 2015, we revised the attendance policy, and as part of that, we revised two other administrative procedures which were, which pertain to students receiving credit for work missed during a suspension. And at that time, prior to that change in 2015, we treated unexcused absences and suspensions the same. So if a student completed the work or made up the work, missed during an unexcused absence or suspension, they didn't receive credit. In 2015, when we revised the attendance policy, we separated, and we no, we no longer want to treat suspensions, makeup work missed during a suspension as an unexcused absence. The principals wanted students to be able to receive credit for the work. We felt that we shouldn't be holding credit for work as a penalty. And so basically, we corrected it in those two other areas, but we noticed just recently on page 10 of the student discipline, it references that suspensions from school will be considered an unexcused absence, and obviously, that's not consistent with the previous changes, and so the changes that you see here, simply clean that up.
Questions?
I feel like a long explanation.
I have one question.
Yes, Mrs. McDonald.
Because we kind of missed that, not to say that we're perfect by any means, but have there been any kids that have been impacted by that, do you know?
No, because we, procedurally-
You're procedurally using that.
We've been, we've been doing it, correct.
Okay, so just to clean up on the policy, though?
Yes.
All right, perfect.
So JD is on as a first reading, and IFE.
Yes, this is one pertaining to field trips. And this is an administrative procedure, so this is for information purposes. In item number eight, under this administrative procedure pertaining to field trips, prior to this suggested revision, we didn't allow what we call blanket permission slips. So for each event, you had to do a, a new permission slip. And in conversation with some of our, our folks out in the buildings who have multiple events that they know of at one time, and I'll use marching band as the best example, they may spend hours completing and then processing permission slips. When they know all the dates, they know the cost, the locations, the mode of transportation, and so forth, so to be able to do that in a, in a blanket format, it really saves a considerable amount of, of the time for those advisors. And so we talked with Gari at, Gari Sashtow from Teller Toma, and she said, really, as long as you're including and getting that information, the date, the time, the location, the mode of transportation, and so forth, those are really the critical pieces of information that parents need to, to have, and you can go with a blanket form if you wish. And so in talking with principals, we want to at least try this on a, on a limited basis with marching band, with robotics, with forensics, debate, and quizz bowl, and, and roll that out, allow a blanket permission slip for those activities. So, and it has support of certainly these directors and sponsors, but also the secondary principals.
And probably some parents.
Yeah.
Are there any questions on this? Since this is administrative procedure and we don't have any questions, can we be done with this?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
Understood.
Don't need to hear it on.
And this one in particular, we would like to put in place, and so we would like to communicate this out to schools that I don't think there's a whole lot going on between now and the end of the year, but we, this is an example of an administrative procedure, which we do feel comfortable changing, posting, and sharing with administrators. It's, it's not predicated on changes to any other policy.
You may hear the hurrahs throughout the district.
Yes.
Especially since they're putting together the registration packets for next year.
Yes.
Okay, my school board friends, that concludes policy.
All righty. That brings us to item six, our Curriculum Committee, and Mrs. Laura, I'll turn it over to you as the chair.
Thank you. We just have one item on the Curriculum Committee today, and that is the renewal of the cooperative agreements. Mrs., Mr. Archibald?
Thank you, and Dr. Terrell has joined me, so we're going to cover the cooperative educational agreements that we have with the Career Center, and then also for our LTP program. So as you know, the reason I'm here is to renew the cooperative educational agreements that we have currently with Northville Public Schools, Plymouth Canton Community Schools, Wayne Westland Community Schools, Redford Union Schools, the Crestwood School District, and Canton Preparatory School. I've had contact over the last couple of weeks with representatives from each of these districts who have expressed an interest in renewing these agreements. As you know, these agreements allow students from these districts to attend our Livonia Career Technical Center as space permits, so we will schedule all of our students, and then once we've completed that process, and then, then we open up these programs to students from these districts. The resident district receives the state aid for the students, and then is billed by LPS on a proportional basis, based on how, the amount of time the student's at the Career Center. Special Education Services are the responsibility of the resident district, and we also have an agreement in place, although I can't think of the last time that we've used it, to allow LPS students to go to the Career Center in the Wayne Westland School District, and so we would like to renew that as well. So I'd ask that the renewal of those educational cooperative agreements go on a consent agenda for, if we can get a way on that.
Any questions or comments?
One question. Am I remembering correctly that this will be the second year we've added Canton Preparatory School to it, and that they're a charter school?
Correct. And they have, they have one student with us currently, and would like to add to that next year, so they want to add. Plymouth Canton currently has seven students, and we've had over 10 express interests for next year. Northville currently has 81, and looking to increase where they can, and Redford Union has two.
Thank you. Am I correct in understanding that none of these districts can have any slots until everybody from Livonia has been placed?
Correct, correct. So we'll do our scheduling in-house, resolve conflicts, and then, and Mr. Anderson, like Dr. Haas did, will work very hard to try and accommodate all of our students and as many of the out-of-district students as we can.
Anyone else?
This agreement is renewed every year-
Correct.
-for the beginning of the year, and really, nothing but the date has been changed-
Thank you for adding that, that's correct. That's correct.
Okay. Anyone else, and-
Consent, are we okay?
Consent? Do we agree with that?
Yep.
Okay. So that concludes the-
I have one more, sorry. That's okay, that's okay. I would like to also present the renewal of the cooperative agreements for the Livonia Transition Program. This is our fourth year, and we are renewing our cooperative agreements for Redford Union, South Redford, and Crestwood, and for the 1617 school year, we are adding Northville Public Schools. So as with Mr. Archibald, we would also like to have ours on the consent agreement, because the only part of our agreement that changes would be the date. We are, the resident district receives their state aid, and then we charge a flat rate per student for each of these sending districts. We currently have in this school year, five Redford Union, two South Redford, and one Crestwood student. This is our first year that the Livonia Transition Program has been housed at Schoolcraft College, so we'd also like to personally thank Glenn Cerny at Schoolcraft, as well as Schoolcraft College themselves, for having two offices for our Livonia Transition Program and three classrooms for our students. The experience for our students to be on a college campus is wonderful, so we appreciate that.
Any questions, comments? This too is renewed every year.
Yes.
Thank you. Sorry for cutting you off.
No, that's okay.
Okay.
Mrs. Laura, I did, I ran into a student who is a friend of our family's, and asked, and she participates in this program, and I just asked her casually, how does, how's it going, and how do you like it? And she said, "I just love it there." So, I was, it was exciting to hear, and it's the kind of thing that, that we need to get the word back to a lot of folks who worked really hard for a number of years to make that happen, so.
Absolutely, and in our new location, we also have mod pizza, so because we're now at Schoolcraft, we're starting to get additional job sites that are around Schoolcraft, so it's opening up more opportunities for our students, so we're very excited. So if we could put it on the consent agenda as well, we'd appreciate it.
Yep.
Thank you. So that concludes our curriculum. Thank you both for color coordinating.
Yes.
It's very special, though.
The next item on our agenda is item seven, Personnel, and Mr. Centers, you're the chair of that, I don't know that we have any-
We have no items this evening.
Okay. And we, item eight, Legislative Committee, Mrs. McDonald, do you have anything?
Oh, I do not.
Nope.
President Burton.
All righty. Okay, that brings us to the end of our agenda. We thank you for joining us. Our next, our next regular meeting is next April 18th, and many of the items that we will be, that we have discussed tonight, we will be voting on at that time. We will be closing this meeting at, right now, as a closing hour committee of the whole meeting, and we will be opening our special meeting at this time for the Livonia Public Schools Board of Education, April 11th, 2016. Mr., I'm sorry, Mrs. Bonnefield, will you please take the role for our special meeting, which is beginning now?
Yes, ma'am. Mr. Centers?
Here.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Here.
Mr. Johnson?
Here.
Mrs. Laura?
Here.
Mrs. McDonald?
Here.
Mrs. Bonnefield is here. President Burton?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda for our special meeting, special meeting is Audience Communications. I do not see any members of our audience in attendance any longer, they have all petered out on us. Is there anybody here who would like to address the board? Nope, not even behind me. The next item on our agenda is item three, Recession to Close Session, to Consider Written Legal Opinion from Council. May I have a motion, please?
President Burton?
Mr. Johnson?
Move that we move into closed session to consider written legal opinion from Council.
Support.
We have a motion by Mr. Johnson, supported by Mrs. Jarvis. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, Mrs. Bonnefield, will you please take the role?
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Laura?
Yes.
Mrs. McDonald?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. President Burton?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. We are now in closed, we are now going into closed session. We do, we will not plan on returning to television at this, at any time later this evening. If you are joining us from home, we wish you a nice evening, and we'll see you again next week. Thank you.